Okay, so as far as I can tell, everyone is here.
All right, well, why don't we go ahead and get started? I'd like to welcome everyone out to our work session meeting virtually. Go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance. Miss Upchurch, would you lead us in that, please?
Yes, sir. Do we get a flag?
Yep.
All right, everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
The Republic.
The righteous stands. One nation.
God.
Under God.
With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all. Thank you, Miss Upchurch. How's everyone doing this morning?
Still here.
Excellent. All right, first agenda item that we have is the strategic plan update. And Dr. Summers, we'll give you a few minutes for this item.
Sure. Well, thank you. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our May 5th work session. As you can tell from the agenda, there's quite a bit for us to cover. And as we were talking about planning for this meeting, we thought it would be appropriate to visit some of the work that we know we were actively engaged in as we started in January into February. A lot of feedback from our community through collaboration events and so forth. And so our draft strategic plan, which we have posted here, is intended to be a reference point and a working and living document. And as we consider what's most important in D38 both now and in the future, we recognize these five specific categories of goals. We also understand as we process through these goals that there's a lot of overlap and interdependence between each of these goals. So they don't necessarily stand completely on their own. We need them all to be able to deliver a world-class education that prepares every one of our students for a successful future. And in light of our current situation, part of being strategic is making sure that we don't lose sight of these bigger goals. And simply because we're in the midst of the crisis, we acknowledge that at times within a crisis, a lot of these can be illuminated even further. And we can be tested as we think about what our priorities are and how we continue to frame these in an ongoing effort to seek alignment and make sure that we are adjusting and adapting to the circumstances that we have while also remaining true to what we're aspiring toward as an organization. So I just thought it'd be helpful to open this up for any thoughts or dialogue with the board as we dive into some additional agenda items. And I just wanted to make sure that we kept this out in front of us as we continue to think about what our next steps are.
May I make a comment there?
Please.
So, Dr. Summers, I read through this and I appreciate the summary and where we were before the pandemic. The only thing that I might add here is that we might want to put something in here about such incidences. I know this isn't going to be a common occurrence, but the reality is in business, you have a business continuity plan. And in a school district, I see no reason not to have some sort of continuity plan or however you want to frame it. But I think you understand what I'm suggesting.
Yes, I think that makes a lot of sense. I also think what we started with in this document, there's still more to flesh out, more to come. I know one of the things that we were committing to ahead of our initial change that everything, you know, kind of shut down and made it hard for us to meet on a typical schedule or in person is planning meetings around each of these topics and really attuning to metrics and measurements that we could develop that help shed more focus on how do we know we're there? In addition to action planning, in addition to resource allocation and some of those other pieces. So this is still obviously a work in progress. And I don't want to lose momentum on it. I think we've positioned ourselves with a strong foundation. The other component, I think, that builds this up is our values. And as we talk more about what those values are and how we respond in different circumstances, staying true to those values, staying focused and aligned is really important as well. So I appreciate that feedback, Mr. Taylor.
One last thing, and that was, as I recall in our offsite, we actually had this list, you know, chicken scratched on the board. And I think we identified teams that would be assigned. If we could just have that update so that we know you know, who the team members are and who the team lead might be or co-leads or whatever you want to do. But just, you know, to to maintain momentum, I think it would be good to know where we fit individually.
Yeah, we can provide a refresh on that and make sure that we're, as we're working into the summer especially, creating more opportunities for additional work around each of these.
I just.
Thank you.
I'd just like to comment that I think it's important that we as a board continue to move forward with these goals. And the move forward, obviously, is going to look different given the current circumstances. But I don't, you know, and even if, as I read these now, some of them, you realize they're going to wax and wane depending on the circumstances surrounding the district. And that's even changed for me since we were going, you know, cultivating these in February. But I think one sort of take with us message that we could have is that we can still move forward with these. The move forward may look different, but it doesn't mean that we necessarily need to put everything entirely on hold or to feel stuck, that we still have these goals that will actually help us determine, you know, where best to put energies and allocate certain investments. So I think that it's it's a great overarching scaffold for us to to keep in front of us regularly. And I agree, I think it would be helpful to just add the team member names on this document.
Thanks, Ms. Phillips.
Might I add one item?
Absolutely.
Thanks. So not to reiterate what both Mr. Taylor and Ms. Phillips said, but I want to piggyback on it. There's a lot of things here that we can do, whether we're under pandemic scenario or not, and in we as the citizens representatives and the caretakers of KCU team and your staff and the students can try to plow forward in the spirit of getting something done that they can utilize that creates a net and lasting benefit. So so I wanted to make sure that we put milestones and achievements down along with the team leads so that we have physical results at the end of a time window and something that the students and staff can physically enjoy or consume. Pick any verb you want that makes a lasting and marginal difference, because that's why we're here.
Appreciate that comment, Mr. Schwartz. Absolutely. And I think that's the intent of working together as a team is to identify exactly those achievements and milestones that we're striving for and recognizing that what we measure will get done. So it's important that we provide more clarity around that. And to the extent that we're able to achieve those within established timeframes and provide updates as we go, I think that'll continue to make this document more than just words on paper, but but the actions that represent what we're all aspiring to.
Might I make a suggestion? I'm pulling up my notes from our retreat where we formed our groups. Perhaps we set a goal to meet together with our partner, as it were, for the respective assignments. And then our June work session meeting, perhaps we return and report so we could keep this process moving along.
We'd be happy to facilitate that as soon as possible.
Yep, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, my, if it's okay, Teresa, might I volunteer Teresa and myself on the safety and security side? Because we've already been doing work on it.
If I'm not mistaken, Ron, I think we've already kind of made the assignments. At least that's my recollection. And so I.
I'm speaking in terms of reporting next month.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Perfect.
Take some weight off the teammates.
Okay, appreciate that.
So were you thinking of a staggered report or were you thinking as a report on all five areas in June?
Well, maybe just a brief summary, you know, five minutes indicating that what you and your partner had addressed kind of ideas to to move these goals and objectives forward. You know, my concern is, you know, we we had these goals back in February and quite frankly, I haven't been as proactive as I would like. So squeaky wheel gets the grease. So if we have a date and time on the calendar where we return and report, you know, we could each take five minutes, share our thoughts and ideas, and then we could take it from there.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think June works well. And, you know, I think it's understandable that we are just sort of getting back into some movement here, given the circumstances the last six, eight weeks. So.
Yeah. Would the Chris, I like that you pointed out having contingency plans. Wouldn't that, would that still be part of our overall district structure as far as I'm looking at this? And I think that would fit into a couple of different goals without having to itemize it on its own. But that it's a part of the bigger picture.
I would agree with that. It should just be, you know, threaded in where it fits, because it is a continuity plan of these goals, right? That's the plan.
And we actually have a later agenda item in this work session that will share with you a framework that we are just beginning to dig into as we think about plans leading into the summer and next fall. I know that's top of mind for a lot of folks is what does the fall look like? So I think it's something that we could certainly embed within these conversations around the strategic plan so that we're not just making tactical adaptations, but that we're really addressing where we hope to continue. The reason I'm pausing a little bit there with with effect is this, this is a real challenging dynamic that we are faced with. And I want to start by elevating just appreciation, thanking and honoring all of our staff. Our teachers are doing a fantastic job and really all of our support staff along with them. But in light of Teacher Appreciation Week and all the gratitude that we're trying to bestow, I was, it occurred to me that this is a presentation that we would not typically want to share in such a way that that creates a bunch of questions and, you know, resulting emotions that go along with that, including some degree of fear and even anxiety. That being said, we also think it's prudent for us to make sure that you all are aware as a board and that our community is also aware that we we face some real significant challenges as we work through this budget planning process. As we dive into more of these details, you'll begin to see that we still do not have all the answers at this point. In fact, we're working with a national blast about 10 to 15 minutes total. And if we can keep our questions maybe all to the end, I think that'd be helpful just in light of keeping this moving along. So we wanted to start just by framing our values in this conversation. Certainly, our students and commitments to high-quality learning for all of our students continues to be our driver will will always be what keeps us moving in this direction. And right around that, we know that our staff that take care of our kids, deepening our support for them. I know that is a goal. That's that's one that we're calling out in our strategic plan. So as we're thinking about that and talking about these different scenarios, we'll want to keep those aspects in mind and certainly our community as a whole and really continuing to build trust and recognizing the partnerships that are going to carry us through this. We will not be able to handle any of this in isolation or apart from each other. And certainly financial stability and thinking about that both over the short and the long term. Let's go to the next, yeah, challenges. So several challenges. This is just a starting point for how we're framing those. We're on a very short timeline to implement changes for the next fiscal year, beginning July 1. And as you'll see through this presentation, there's a large range in reduction projection that we're really having to respond to at this point. With also an understanding that the long-term outlook is unknown and that this will very likely have a multi-year impact. And what we're hearing is we have conversations with the state is that's at least two to three years, it could even linger longer. And with all that, no easy solution. So we know we have our work cut out for us here. I'll hand it over to Dave for the next few slides.
There we go. Yeah. So as far as the Colorado budget outlook with the with the COVID economic impact, we are receiving and anticipated, well, there's going to be at least a $3 billion shortfall for the 2021 school year, but that's, that's the three, that's $3 billion for, yeah, exactly for that year. As as Dr. Summers was alluding to, this impact could be another year after this, possibly another year after that. When I talked to our people from the state that formulate our PPR, when we had conversations probably, I don't know, three weeks ago, it was a, it was a conversation about a 1% to 3% reduction in our revenue. This last conversation was at a minimal attempt, a possible 10% reduction in our revenue. So that creates a lot of pivoting for us and and having to have these conversations with you to to determine what we're going to do. If we do a 10% reduction in our district, that revenue reduction would be equivalent to about a $5.2 million adjustment. The cuts for the budget would be starting in July 1. So as we develop our budget and as we continue to discuss with you, we'll have some of those those adjustments throughout May and June. Can we go to the next slide? There we go. So as far as the budget timeline for us, you know, we're kind of shooting in the dark right now. The Joint Budget Committee is going to get updated with the forecast on May 12. The Long Bill School Finance Act to the House is going to happen on May 18. The Long Bill School Finance Act to the Senate, you can see on May 25. And we hope to have a decision prior to June 1 as far as where we come in with our with our revenue stream. So we know we're receiving some money federally. Colorado is going to receive 121 million. That's going to be 90% of that's going to be allocated and they're going to use the funding formula of of Title I. And so we don't receive as much as other districts in the state with with Title I allocations. So our projected amount of money that would come out of that 121 is is the $288,000 number that you see there. The release of these funds, hopefully sometime in June that we will see that.
May I ask a question there, Dave?
Yes.
On that previous slide, so you know, the PPR that we get is less than than some of the other districts. We're getting less of this CARES Act fund. Will you know, to take that one step further, then do we get less of a budget cut? I mean, I'm just wondering, is this proportional where we don't get as much as others get when it's revenue? But then when the budget cuts do, budget cuts occur, do we get less of a budget cut proportionally, the way we get revenue?
Mr. Taylor, I don't, I don't think so. When I had a conversation with Tim Colley at the state, we talked about, you know, the anticipated revenue reductions and talking, and you'll see some in further in the slides, but looking at an additional cut or an additional increase in our budget stabilization factor coming, going from about a $4 million cut to about an $8 million cut. And then he he also brought up, well, that should be offset by some at-risk funding that we're going to receive. But when you're a district that doesn't receive a lot of at-risk funding, that's what I pointed out to him, then that that doesn't, there is not an equalization. then that, that doesn't, there is not an equalization there that we are probably going to see more of a cut because if we use that at-risk factor, yeah, we're not going to, we are going to be impacted probably more than maybe some other districts. So no, to answer your question.
So, so in blunt terms, we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't.
Yeah. And I, I see that reflected across the state really. The impact is going to hit all the districts, even with at-risk or not. Cause they'll have other pieces that they have to adjust.
If I may, might I add a couple of data points here? Cause I've been doing a bit of research in this area as well. Or Casey, would you prefer I wait till the end?
If it's specific to the CARES, I think it's fine. If you want to bring it up here.
It is.
Sure.
Chris, to your point, uh, two things. One is there's actually two tranches of money. Uh, and by the way, the federal government allocate $13.5 billion in net total for K through 12 educational relief funding in the United States, all to be distributed through the governors. Colorado in general has about 1.23% of the pop, uh, excuse me, 1.7% of the population and received about 1.23% of the funds. So there's a disproportionality, Chris, to your point to begin with. And using Title One formula makes a significant difference on the negative side to districts that are like ours. So last I checked, there were 913,000 students K through 12 this year in the state. We have about three quarters of a percent of those, if you take our population. And if you just did a straight piece of math on what Mr. Cruz presented, that would be about $790,000. But because of Title One being the formula, as you'd mentioned, damned if you do, damned if you don't. However, there's a second tranche of money called, I think the acronym is GIRS. That's $44 million or gear. Sorry. I think it stands for police.
Sorry to interrupt there, Mr. Schwartz, but we actually have a slide speaking of that. So Vicki, if you can.
Next slide.
One more.
The, the only good news, we weren't anticipating any money and we're getting some.
Yeah. And there's no guarantee of how these discretionary dollars from the governor are necessarily going to be spent right now. And what we were told a couple of weeks ago is that we were to expect a survey sometime soon, and we still have yet to, to see that. So I'm, I'm not encouraged by counting on any of, uh, these specific dollars, though there still may be some amount that's lingering out there at some point. What I do feel confident in is somewhere around, I think we can project between a 200 to a $300,000 influx of dollars from, from CARES. And Vicki, if you just go back one more slide. So the, these would be examples. The nice thing about this dollar amount and what we have is some flexibility around the use of the funding. Specifically, we do need to make the point that it's being used to address the impact of COVID-19. But as you can see below, there's several different areas that that dollar amount can be applied to. And at this point, I will tell you that we have not formulated a, a specific set of plans around all of this. I think that would involve some additional collaboration and identifying what more of our needs are as we continue to go forward.
But Casey, is it fair to say that the, whatever funding we get from the CARES Act would just offset our budget cuts? I mean, I, I don't know that, I don't know what you're thinking here, but when I look at this, it's like, is this incremental spending that we wouldn't normally do? Or is this just going to be used to offset budget cuts?
Great question. We have been directed that, that we shouldn't necessarily just throw it into our reserves, that we should be able to track where the funding actually goes. But I think it's fair to say where we may not be able to spend in certain categories, we could use these dollars to allocate additional funding that we may not be able to with our projected budget for 2021.
But anything on this list, I would assume other than planning for long-term closures would be in our budget.
That, yes, you're correct.
You know, one of our special meeting agenda items is purchase of, of technology. And I'm looking at the first bullet point, purchasing educational technology. So, you know, perhaps, um, we could use some of this money to defer those educational expense, technology expenses, if that's the direction the board decides to go.
That's correct. That would certainly be an allowable use of these funds. So with, with all that, Dave, I think we're getting back on track here. So it's, we already talked about this, this funding here. So let me take it from here at this point. And there was a couple of supporting documents in the work session agenda as well. But what this illustrates, this is pulled from the School Finance Project, which we're staying in regular communication with as many districts are throughout all of the information that we're receiving. So this shows you, and, and Dave alluded to it earlier, the budget stabilization factor scenarios. Funding by district. So that there's actually an Excel spreadsheet. We're not going to go through that exercise right now. But if you wanted to see the impact across multiple districts, you could. So what you see here is what our funding would be with no BS factor. I think that's something that we do have to, to be mindful of is any additional cuts that we face are going to be tacked on to already that 3.977 base total BS factor. So you can see the funding with current BS factor, that's a total percentage reduction of 7%. And then incrementally at 5, 10, 15, and 20%, you see what the total impact would be. We're starting at that 10% cut mark, just as a, a starting point for these conversations. So you see that 5.2 million in that additional BS factor rating, which certainly has an impact as we continue to, to envision more of that total percentage reduction. This is one of those charts that as we're, we're saying 10%, it becomes even more scary when we start going into additional double digits there. So it's just more, uh, context for how we're having these conversations. The highlighted rows just show you where we basically be fully funded on local share. Starting at a 15% cut, which there, there's actually additional supporting documentation that School Finance Project has, has provided in that. And a lot of districts would start getting to that point in the 15 to 20% column.
Casey, can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Can you go into a little bit more detail in explaining what app-based funding, I, you just did, but can you, can you put it a little bit more in layman's terms?
It's a function of the state and local share combination. So our state share is going to be impacted to a point where at 15%, it will be no more than the 30 million.
That we've received locally.
Point 162 that you see at the 15 and 20% level. And then we are basically maxed at our local share at that point at, at the 15 million mark. So you, you can see there's a, there's a tipping point where we're, we're just, you know, we're, we're bare bones really at that point. And if we're in that real ugly scenario where we're, I mean, right now we're projecting all of this somewhat conservatively at a 10% reduction. You, you could see incrementally how much we're going to have to find in the budget to make up for that shortfall. And so that, that's going to be reinforced by additional slides that we have for you in a second.
A quick question to make sure I understand how this relates to per pupil revenue. Because there's, there's just, there's a conversation about the baseline. Did I understand it correctly? That by statute in the state of Colorado, funding cannot go below the baseline per pupil revenue. Do I understand that correctly?
Well, it, yes, in theory, by Amendment 23 guidelines, we're, we're not able to go through beyond. And I don't have the specific what that PPR amount is because it, it fluctuates. I don't know exactly what it is off the top of my head for us even.
It's my understanding for 2021, the number is $7,080 per pupil.
Dave, does that sound right based on conversations you've had?
Yeah, yeah. The last, um, yeah, last year was around 6,900. So yeah, they were going to increase that. But again, we don't know. We don't know with that, with that funding change. So you know, that's the plan, but there's going to be, there's obviously, there's going to be some adjustment to that.
I guess my point is to Tiffany's point to make it really, really simple. For those of us that aren't in the accounting field, if we have, we're projecting what 6,700 and change students, right?
Currently FTE, David.
481.5.
For next year.
For next year.
I'm sorry, how many?
6,481 and a half.
So 6481 times 7080 is 45,008.85. Do I do my math right?
You're, you're in the ballpark there, Ron. So that, that's that 15, 20%.
So my point is if we do our planning at that 45304 number, then we likely will not go below that if, unless the legislator chooses to repeal Amendment 23. Is that correct?
I think that's a fair way to frame it. And you can see that total additional cut at that point would be 7.3 and change.
That's, that's in a nutshell, what the, what the negative factor is, is yes, constitutionally, it has to increase at least by inflation each year. But when you, what, so when the Supreme Court ruled that how they can get around that is the, the negative factor, the budget stabilization factor. So that's where they get around that, that minimum number.
You guys are on it. You've got a good grasp of it.
It's not a pretty picture, but we got to understand it so we can work with it, right?
Correct.
Right now we're working at that 47386 number, real close to that as far as our, our, our number that our revenue stream number that we're working with for next year.
Can I ask one more question?
Please.
So I, I see that we're working, we're looking at that 47386 number and that we're highlighting 15% and 20% just in case. To put it in perspective, has there been any indication that it could go up that high?
Yes. Bluntly, when we have these conversations, we are often told that 10% is pardon this analogy, but a sunny day. And that there's a risk for even more clouds, rain, and you know, a storm that could go as high as 15 to 20%. But I think what, it's also important to note there is we will have a better sense of how those state projections are coming in when the budget forecast is submitted by JBC, Joint Budget Committee. That's May 12th, we could, May 12th. So I think we'll have a better indication at that time of exactly how much the state is anticipating. Responding to that shortfall, the $3 billion number that Dave shared with you earlier is a statewide, that's the total state budget cut. And K-12 education represents 36% of that total number. So when you think about somewhere in the neighborhood of a billion dollars being cut across the board, that's, that's the big picture. And then how that trickles down to all of us is what we're preparing for.
So the budget, the budgeting for Lewis Palmer School District, you're anticipating right now, a shortfall from last year of 5.265 million. And it could be as much as 7.347. Worst case is I, as I've heard this conversation. So worst case, Lewis Palmer School District would be short from the state 7.347 million dollars.
Possibly.
And that's versus last year. That's how you're thinking of it, Chris?
Yes.
The year we're in right now.
Right. And that's seven, well, and I think this, what, part of what the slide illustrates forget the BS factor that we're still the 3.97 that we.
Right, but that's.
Past year, yeah.
This year's budget as well. And so when you look at the total BS factor, the 3.97, that $4 million is already in our budget. That's just the remaining negative factor that still is in place. And it's adjusted every year.
Correct.
It went down from 2008 to 2000, I mean, it increased, the negative factor increased.
Yes.
2008, 2009, 2010, 2011. And then it turned and it started decreasing again, but we've never gotten back to 2007, never.
That's correct. That is correct.
There's your damned on either way, Chris.
And what's crazy is that what, two months ago, we had conversations about that negative factor being reduced. So we having additional funding for our district.
I remember that we were out at, uh, let's see, some restaurant having a party and we were talking about that, right? That seems like an eternity ago now.
Good old days, Chris. Good old days.
I get, I guess on a pragmatic standpoint, if we plan at 45304, we know it won't get any lower, correct?
We could look at it that way. So I, I think there's a risk and a reward to that. Um, and if we may, this might be an opportunity to push into the next series of slides, just so that we can frame what some of our conversations and assumptions are as we're approaching reduction planning. So let me just speak to kind of the big picture here. And then Dave's going to kind of take us through some of the details. So the starting point is let's look at how we've positioned ourselves. Somewhat strategically, maybe not with this intention in mind, but recognizing that a healthy fund balance is something that could help us as we work through some hard times. So we're going to share with you what the impact is based on that 10% level. We can certainly do some easy math and figure that out at the no lower or nothing more than the 15, 20% level as we've just discussed. Hold on a second, Vicki, before you go too far. We do want to talk about where we can get some potential cost savings. Uh, uh, obviously we're going to have to look at how we cut expenditures and where that happens is, as we know, really slippery, uh, because when 85% of our budget is compromised by salaries and benefits and our people, we would be remiss if we did not talk about a potential employee impact. So we want to shape each of these slides here with you and in terms of kind of big picture, uh, where we might start. And we can look at this in a lot of different ways. So with that, Dave, let me turn it over to you to kind of go through more of the details, the next few slides.
Yeah. So one of the savings, we can look at our fund balance and, and when we're building our, our budget for this next year, we have a, a fund balance or a beginning fund balance projected around $13 million. With the 10% reduction in the revenue stream, when it's after all of our budgeted expenditures are, are put out there, the fund balance would be reduced to around a seven, eight number. In that seven, eight with reserves, you know, we have restricted reserves and at, at least with one, at least with the Tabor set aside at 1.6 million. There's a few other smaller amounts of money that are restricted also. So when you're looking at that, you know, there's a possibility of, of how much can you free up unless they do some legislative changes? You're, you're looking at only around a $5 million amount to adjust.
Well, let me ask a question there, Dave, if I might. The, the reserves, the primary impact of what your reserve level is on your bond rating, your credit ratings, if you will. Do you know what the ideal or the, the, the right reserve balance is to maintain our credit rating?
Maintain the credit rating, Chris? I do not know off the top of my head. As far as how we've established policy, we wanted to maintain what a 16.67 amount to keep us sound. And that's, that's coming from kind of federal recommendations.
We might call, uh, our investment advisors and ask them what they would see the right reserve amount to be. Cause I know that our prior boards for the last, you know, since the last great recession have done all they could to maintain a balanced budget and to increase this reserve. And the primary purpose of that reserve is, is really your credit rating, right? And that is still a very important feature. And I just want to make sure that we recognize what that minimum reserve percentage must be to maintain our credit rating.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions around this. Number one is can we please, for the entire team, define what reserves are? And, and are there any policies that were enacted by District 38 Board that defined? That defined that defines reserves and the utilization?
So a couple of things on that not let me uh bring up the specific uh policy under question. Okay, so specific to policy uh D I two and and would would be helpful, I think, at some point. And I I can't share a screen here with you all, but I can uh follow up with a link so that we can process through this document uh in greater detail. Uh, essentially what we're looking at is and a lot of these recommendations come straight straight out of the Government Finance Officers Association or G F O A. Uh, which is informed by best practices around uh G A S B, sorry, all these acronyms, Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So what we we're looking at here is the difference between non-spendable uh fund balances. Uh, which is basically we we cannot spend uh things such as inventory prepaid rent. Um, a long time, long term portion of notes receivable. There's also the Tabor requirement, uh which is that one point six that's set aside. So that is a non-spendable uh fund balance. Uh, then there's restricted fund balances. Um, and th- those are constraints that can be externally imposed. Um, so examples could include grants, uh bond funds, uh or funds restricted for debt service. And then there's unrestricted fund balance. Uh, and so that unrestricted fund balance uh can either be commitments uh that the board has made uh for a specific purpose. Uh, again, it could include certain contractual obligations. Uh, it could include uh anything that the board has uh decided uh needs to be committed for a specific purpose. Then there's uh an assigned fund balance, which is amounts that are intended for a specific purpose as evidenced by our adopted budget. Um, but that can be modified. Uh, and then finally, there's an unassigned fund balance. Uh, and that means that we are basically leaving that as um the best way to uh create an analogy around that is it's kind of your savings account. Um, that we wouldn't necessarily start with uh as we're running into uh budget shortfall, but it it's something that obviously um creates some flexibility for us. So G S A B Statement Number Fifty Four further classifies rainy day funds or contingency funds as a stabilization arrangement. Uh, and it does place specific restrictions on what qualifies for such designation. Uh, so we could uh with this amount say, we believe that uh we would like to commit uh a certain amount um based on uh contingency funds that we we have specific criteria where we're meeting uh to establish those fund balances as as described in the preceding paragraphs. Um, the district may also set aside unassigned fund balance as stabilization arrangements. So we could, we could go so far as to say we'll commit, for example, three million dollars out of our five point two um to address the shortfall and still leave some unassigned fund balance uh amount uh to address those issues. I apologize. This is uh me doing my best to summarize a pretty lengthy policy. Um, so make sure to share uh that that specific language with you all so that you know exactly how it reads.
That was a very good summary, Casey. I've read through that and you did a really good job. Uh, I would add just one caveat to what you said, and that is you know, the rainy day fund portion, you know, obviously a pandemic is a rainy day. Uh, but as you all noted earlier, we don't know if this is a one, two, or three year impact. So I just caution us all to when we look at any utilization of the rainy day fund, that we consider it over multiple years, not just this year.
I think that's an excellent point, Mr. Taylor. Thank you.
One question on the Tabor um reserve.
Sure.
Do I understand correctly that the Tabor Reserve may be used uh during pandemics?
So I don't know that we've received that specific waiver uh as of yet. It's being talked about. Dave, do you want to comment on that? I I want to say that I've heard that there's the chance of that, but to date, I don't know that that's been actually allowed. And I think what that may have to require, if I'm um understanding this, Ron, is is a waiver that this current legislative session would have to grant um as they're reconvening um the session. So Dave, is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, I, yeah, the meetings that I've sat in, there's been a few scenarios about that, but nothing has been set up as far as releasing that. One of the thoughts was that they had, people would have, districts would have to exhaust the their their reserves before they could get to that one point three. That's pretty concerning if if that's the case. So there would be, there would have to be some discussion on how that would be allocated through. Districts couldn't survive if they had to, you know, go through all of their reserves before they could hit their Tabor. That's a that's um, that's detrimental for sure.
I also understand there are some relatively specific payback requirements if someone does use, if an entity chooses to use their Tabor reserves. Of course, that begets the question, what's the whole rationale behind having Tabor reserves in the first place?
That I don't have a great answer for, but what I can say is that I think the intent is to allow, if 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 this waiver were in place, that there would be a thirty six month period of payback. Um, versus I think right now it's like if you dip into them, you need to replenish them like within that same year, which sort of make do that, but yeah. Um, that's that's our current understanding. We can make sure to clarify that um as we continue to go.
Yeah, the only reason I'm trying to dive into this to Chris's point is it's likely it'll it'll take a macro economy like the states multiple years to get back to and hopefully above where we were just two, three months ago. And so I look at our values being students first, staff second. Then we clearly want to make sure that we are are prudent about using every penny that's available to us to maintain and and even increase the quality of the educational experience our students get. And 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 to Chris's point, to do that on a three year basis with what we know amendment thirteen allows us to have in terms of minimal student funding that can't be further cut. Unless they repeal amendment twenty three, right?
Um.
It's just gonna take a
Yeah.
Valid initiative, right?
It, well, and it's something that I think right now we're we're hearing that the the sole focus or um essentially all the state level uh House and Senate is going to be able to do is is probably through this budget. And that's that's about the extent of what work they're going to be engaged in uh over the next few weeks. Uh, and just as a quick aside, um, just for your uh ease of reference, I went ahead and shared that specific policy language uh with you all um just to avoid having to to dig through it. It's uh through your email if you want to access it that way. Um, if if we can, let's let's plow through the next uh few slides, Dave. You want to take this one too?
Yeah, with the uh potential cost savings, uh if we we're looking at um, we're not talking about salaries and benefits in this in this slide. We're talking about more of the supplies, capital out, like per- purchase services that we say there. So if we did a ten percent reduction across all departments, uh that that would be an eight hundred thousand dollar um adjustment. So obviously, if we go higher, we could, we could reduce that amount of spending. The impact uh both district and school budgets lot um, the impacts on that with the loss of services like Ron alluded to, you want to continue to provide the best education possible for our students. And so when you have deferred maintenance, or if you have loss of services or supplies, that's not, that's kind of defeating that. So that's a balance. Uh, that's a discussion there that that we need to have to make sure that we're cutting in the in the right places there.
And I'll speak to this moment. Yeah, so just as we think about, again, potential employee impact and and we understand that as we start these types of conversations, uh, there's a tangible ripple effect that uh our people are going to feel uh as as we hypothesize right now, keeping in mind that we're not uh making any decisions uh within the scope of this meeting. But uh, we wanted to give you just a a frame to begin to think about what type of savings we may uh see budgetarily. Uh, starting with, well, and I didn't even call out the the slide that that its starting point would be a freeze and pay. Um, that freeze and pay would would essentially um be uh, you know, obviously a a impact uh to people's uh current take home pay. Uh, but uh it doesn't necessarily afford us um any more dollars. It just doesn't create uh an ongoing obligation. Uh, if we were to increase salaries, which is a a scenario that we did talk about uh just two weeks ago. So um, keeping in mind that there's this whole continuum of what's uh being talked about or considered. Uh, if we were to look at a furlough day and just uh to define that for everybody, that is essentially a day off uh without pay. Uh, if we're looking at uh one day uh across the entire system, that would yield about two hundred and ten thousand. Um, if we were to talk about a percentage reduction of pay uh in everyone's salaries, uh, starting at one percent, uh, that would yield uh about two hundred and ninety four thousand. So certainly one uh possibility is to envision one or the other or a combination uh of both. Um, without going into a lot more detail with that at this point, then um that fourth bullet point, which is something I I think, you know, none of us wants to envision. Um, but there is uh certainly a reality that we have to acknowledge in regards to the potential of um laying off some staff. And as we look at twenty twenty one, um, if we made the decision right now to say, hey, we we really want to avoid that at all costs. Um, we, you know, certainly could could go into next year with that mindset. Um, but I don't know that we would be able to have that same mindset as we go into the subsequent year or beyond. Um, I think the other component we have to to think about with all of that, not just the impact of not returning to quote unquote, normal in the fall. Um, but we understand that enrollment uh is a significant variable that we have to account for as well. So um, to date, we have uh continued to work toward a staffing model that is based off that six uh sixty four eighty one uh point five number that we we shared earlier, which we know is essentially a flat uh enrollment projection. Um, if we come into October and we are seeing where where we currently land at sixty forty one, uh, we're going to be making um recommendations that are consistent with uh what that total cut from the state will be. But if it ends up dropping further, um, it may make it very difficult at that point uh to not um make a decision that if we don't make it now, we may have to make it even in the middle of next year. So I just wanted to bring that up because uh, we understand that this is people's livelihoods. These these are um, these are our people. Uh, so we don't uh share this information lightly. Uh, but as we think about the potential impacts, we know um that it is about our folks that that do such a fantastic job. And uh, this is also something we need to to call out is it's difficult to implement quickly. Um, so we won't know exactly where we land in in terms of that uh potential cut until uh, you know, at the earliest, we'll have a better sense in mid-May, but but we won't know final numbers until uh early June. So we just have to to keep that in mind uh as well. And and we understand uh again, the ripple effects that I think this will have uh throughout not only our system, but the entire community. Um, the next couple of slides are are pretty straightforward, so maybe we can uh just give you the timeline here and then again, uh revisit any questions. Uh, we will, uh, so by uh statute, we have
Casey, can I?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to touch on that timing question that you had, though. You know, I I know in normal circumstances, right, we'd have the budget approved probably in May. But with the pandemic, we have some time. But the, I guess where I'm going is I I uh I know I'll be available and I'd like to hopefully have everyone available that even if it's near the last week of June, if we have to go that far, I want us to have as much flexibility and knowledge as possible before we set that budget. So I just wanted to throw that out there uh for your consideration.
Sure. So uh, let me speak to uh that question and and uh or comment uh and what we've um shared here, at least in the projected timeline. Uh, so constitutionally, we are uh by statute required to share with you a draft budget no uh later than thirty days ahead of uh finalizing the budget for uh twenty twenty one. So that would give us no later than the end of May uh to submit if we were going to push the final budget approval um, you know, by the end of June. Um, we we feel pretty confident in our ability, and and I can let Dave speak to this as well, where we can present a draft budget to you all with some different assumptions. We can talk more about what those assumptions are, but at a minimum, a ten percent reduction in revenue. Um, where we may be able to to experience some additional uh cost savings and and some of the things we've just discussed. Um, we we feel confident that we can share that with you all uh by May eighteenth. Now, if we wanted to push that back, um, again, we have to do that before the end of May. Um, we do have a June work session that we can um kind of talk about the timing of that. Um, and then we we also believe that we can um, you know, it's an aggressive timeline, but we do believe that we'll be in a position where we can uh finalize the budget by June fifteenth. But but certainly if the board uh wishes to, you know, pursue a different timeline, we can um, work that into this plan and and talk more about uh what adjustments make the most sense.
Casey, can I cut in real quick? Um, with that aggressive timeline, uh, we're still statutorily required to uh run this by DAC as well. Is that right?
So you guys are doing a good, great job of uh segueing. Uh, so real quick, this and then we'll we'll uh certainly process some more. So we um have a communication timeline. One of the things that's really important is that we uh shape this message. We have a a staff community update that'll be going out later this afternoon that essentially summarizes what we've shared with you all here today. Um, we've shared with you at least the the initial proposed budget, uh, which will be available for review. Um, you know, that May eighteen through June fifteenth timeline, which we can um play with. Uh, so Tiffany, to your to your point around DAC, uh, that is uh something we are planning currently the week of May twenty sixth. Uh, we've not set the official date yet, but wanted to work through this today and and then talk about um even the potential of additional input uh or commentary uh as we go forward. So uh with that all said, um, just want to make sure you know we're we're right there with you. Uh, and then Dave, did you have something just in regards to that?
Can you go back one slide? So on that May eighteenth assumptions, ten percent reduction as well as, and you already said it, Casey, I just want to reiterate it that salaries would be remaining flat. So what people made this year, it's just rolled over uh into this year's into that draft budget. The only changes that would be made there would be uh an increase in our health costs and our benefit costs, our health costs, our P R A costs and our Medicaid costs. That'd be the only change on that. That's all.
So um, we'll we'll definitely uh process any other questions that are on the table at this time.
Casey, I have a question um regarding what we were just talking about. And yeah, can we flip back one slide? Um, so if if you propose a draft budget that's ten percent and then it comes down uh two weeks later that it's going to be twelve percent or something, we can, would you, is it formulated in such a way that you could just multiply factors across across the entire budget?
Yes.
Okay, so that leads me to, and Chris, I appreciate your point about um being flexible. And I personally would be very flexible because I'm going to be here all of June, but but perhaps we don't need to do that if it's just a multiplication factor. We'd still have the final budget approval on the fifteenth. Is that what you're?
That that is our current, based on conversations that we've had, we think that merits consideration. So I I I think on one hand, while giving ourselves more time to work with it, uh, makes some sense, particularly as we're challenged by where are we making the the cuts and how how is that impacting um, everything? Uh, that that's something we have to to be mindful of. But at the same time, I I think there's a a point where I don't know that it changes a whole lot from June fifteenth to June twenty second, for example. Um, or even as late as June twenty ninth, that that there's an advantage to to not working up all the way to uh that drop dead deadline, which would be uh June thirtieth.
Right. And to that point, how long is the, um, I think on the next slide, it says there's public comment.
Yes.
That begins um May nineteenth. How how long is there a i- is there a rule about how long that public comment stays open?
It would go all the way through until the final budget is approved.
Okay. So I don't feel one way or the other. I, you know, I
Yeah, one way for us to approach this is uh we'll know a lot more, well, we'll know what we know um the week of the of May twelfth. Um, my my sense is at that point, we're we're going to have a pretty within a range of maybe margin error of a percent at that point, a a plan for this being the the percent reduction that you're going to have to work with to the earlier points. You know, we could certainly start that conversation right now at the 15% mark. But it, you know, my my thought to that is great on one angle. And then on the other, if we don't have to cut that much, then obviously, we don't want to have to cut any more than we need to. So you know, that that's something that I think we we want to make sure that we're getting, we're preparing for as we go into that May 18 board meeting is is that the draft budget is just that at that point. It's a draft budget. What I actually personally, I think that makes a lot of sense for us at that point to say with everything that we know by May 18, we're going to share it with you. And here's our best look at it. And there's, you know, between May 18 and June 15, we have a lot of, well, to the extent that this this is a lot of hours and a lot of, you know, to to an extent, sleepless nights, et cetera, we we do have enough cushion to be able to take what's drafted and then what is ultimately going to be finalized to position that to to be presented to the board for final approval by our original scheduled date of June 15.
Dr. Summers?
Please.
In the spirit of segues, one thought I had was since we're all here, since this is quite impactful and quite unique times, I'd like to propose that the board have another working session sometime in the next around two weeks and go through these issues where we can discuss them as a team and vet them well as a team and get the expertise of yourself and your team to make sure that as we think about how we want to go forward, that that we're doing so in a thoughtful manner. And to Chris's point, in a manner that that will last for up to 36 months with the with the hope that it only lasts for 12.
Just looking
Can I add to that?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. So I appreciate everyone's comments and concerns. This is not easy. But it's not easy for anybody anywhere right now. You know, I have I have employees who have lost family to this COVID thing. So it's it's a tough time, and I don't want to sound heartless. But we have to deal with what we know. And I appreciate everything that Dr. Summers and the entire crew has done. And I've always, you know, for the last six months or so, since the last campaign, I I heard loud and clear that this community would like us to see a long range plan. I think right now, we have to build a three year budget. I I'm going to be pretty reluctant to support a one year budget without looking at the three years. And I'm saying that because you all have said this is potentially a three year issue. Now, maybe we'll have a V turnaround and it will be right back where we were in December, and that will be wonderful, but we don't know. So I'm going to ask for your consideration, whether at a work session or however, but I'd like to see. And it can be in rough format, but you know, I'd like to see this year, 2021, 21, 22, 22, 23, at at least the level that you see on the
Mistake they made was anticipating that the economic downturn was going to be shorter than it was. I think we need to hope for the best, plan for the worst. Planning for the worst is kind of projecting out three to four years. You know, who knows? Three years might even be conservative. You know, I am sensitive to the impacts that, you know, these reductions will make. One idea that I I just wanted to bring up for consideration either today or at another time is quite frankly, we're not going to have any control over the amount of money received from Denver. That's that's outside of our purview. The one area that we do have control over is the assistance that we get from families of students. I know it's probably not a popular topic, but for every hundred dollars that we charge more than we're charging right now per 6,500, that's some 6,000, $650,000. So perhaps, you know, we need to look at these cuts, but I think we also need to look at how we could ask our families to the education of our kids. You know, we've been unsuccessful with bonds and MLOs and I think with the the quality of education and the great teachers and professional teams that we have, you know, looking at some additional assistance, either through fees, whatever it might be, is something that should be on the table for consideration.
So can I have a question, a question and comment? My question, my first question is, if you go back a couple of slides when we're when we're looking at this and considering this right, right there, that one, when it says furlough days, is it possible? And then being waiting for what's going to happen?
So I I think that's a fair question. This is what I there's it's multifaceted. So the best way for me to answer that right now is on a surface level, there is the potential for some of our staff, if they were laid off, to collect perhaps a percentage increase on what they would be making from unemployment claims. The impact to the district in that situation is we are responsible for an unemployment claim over a 36 month period. So when you add that up over time, the unemployment we're basically paying for, right? And we're paying for it over a three year rate. So while it may have an initial advantage to an individual employee, it does not necessarily benefit organization longer term. The other dynamic to that, and we've been resolute through this entire crisis, saying that that people will continue to be paid what they've been paid is at least through the the rest of this fiscal year. You know, the money that we had already budgeted. And what we're also cognizant of is there is, we have a highly dedicated and talented workforce. So when you start letting people go, you're hedging your bet almost that says, well, when it gets back to whatever sort of normalcy we're going to experience, then we'll just hire you back. But there's no guarantee that we'll be able to hire that same individual back. So there's there's that element too. What we have crunched some numbers around is is if we were to furlough right now, just as an effort toward finding some savings between now and the end of this fiscal year for employees that are not currently working, because again, we keep in mind, we do have a lot of employees that are still working. But for the employees that are not, it would be about a $20,000 give or take savings per day. So at this point, what we've we've established is we really don't believe that that savings is significant enough to to start going in that direction. And plus, it it kind of pulls back on what we've already shared with our people. And that I don't feel great about. So at least everything that we're talking about through thinking forward and planning for beginning in July 1 is a function of the 2021 budget. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All those
Yeah. And that's what I was asking was I I didn't mean this this school year. I meant
Okay.
the 2021.
And that and that's certainly something we have to pay close attention to is what does the fall look like? And again, that's something that, you know, as we're we're kind of creating a ton of information here for you to process, that's that's certainly a dynamic that we want to speak to a little bit here later in the meeting as well.
Casey, I just realized I have a blind spot with regard to furlough days. Do furlough days mean non-class days or?
Yes.
Okay.
Nothing.
So that's that's assuming in class learning.
Whole district is down. Yeah.
Okay.
What we would typically
Students have a scenario too, right?
I'm sorry, Mr. Schwartz, can you say it one more time?
We, our priorities are students, staff, community and financial, yes?
That's correct.
Furlough the staff for a day. What happens to the students?
So what we typically do, and we haven't specified a day in our calendar for next year, but we typically stay away from those instructional days. So we might look at a day that is already set aside for professional development of some sort or a teacher work day. But typically, we would we would avoid any of the instructional days. Both from a standpoint of the impact of the student, as well as understanding our instructional hours commitment that that will actually, we don't know what that's going to look like right now, because there's the potential of that being waived for next year. But I hope that answers your question. Typically, we stay away from from instruction.
Actually, I apologize. It didn't. To Tiffany's point, if we decide to make every fifth Friday a furlough day next year.
Okay.
What do the parents do with their kids?
It's a great question.
If it's students, staff, community and financial stability, I just wonder if that's in the communities and the students' best interest, especially given the amount of instruction time and face time they've lost this fiscal year.
Well, Casey, can you clarify for me? Because I heard something different, I guess, than Ron. Ron, I thought I heard Dr. Summers say that the furlough days would not impact instructional days. So
I think it does. Let's ask.
It's it would all be a function of when, what days we are specifying on. So our starting point for those days would not be instructional days.
Okay, so those might be like the days before school starts and after school ends.
Correct.
Any days.
Okay. Thank you, Chris, for clarifying that. Okay. But if if we did a four day work week, that's a big difference, right?
Yes.
That's a major impact on the student.
That would be, well, and if we're calling it a four day work week, now we're talking about a a real, well, right, there's several ripple effects that we'd have to
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thanks very, very much, Chris, for clarifying that.
I I would like to add to Ron's suggestion, though, of having scheduling a work session. It seems to me that we might all be well served if we would spend a day doing type of an offsite, offsite today might be at the Big Red, but we really should look at a a three to five year plan and roll up our sleeves and kind of work through that because I think the most important thing we do as a board right now is look out five years. And this annual budgeting process is just more of the same. I mean, it happens every year. It's the biggest thing that can change many dynamics is if we would put together a five year plan. This is where we're at. This is where we want to be. Matt raised a really interesting point of increasing fees. Perhaps we go to the ballot this fall and we look at the our 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 mill levy rate and we but you can't do it without a plan. You can't do it based on a one year budget. We have to look at this at five years out. Within five years, another bond pays it is paid off. So then our, what do we do? If we don't get our community involved in this, I think we're going to really miss a great opportunity.
Chris, wonderful point. And to be clear, I wasn't necessarily thinking of going forward with a bond or MLO. I was thinking more of of actual costs to our parents who have kids in District 38.
Understood, Matt. I was I was just adding to your thought of increasing fees, fee based revenue as saying, well, perhaps perhaps we should consider the effort it might be to go to the community and you know, I'm I'm open to help, but I I literally think that we can't be totally reactionary here. We got to be forward looking and, you know, we need to take everything into account. And the reality is, is maybe we won't get a perfect 10 year plan in six months or three days or whatever, but we can put something out there. We can put something out there. And if I need to roll up my sleeves and help, I'm happy to. One of the things I've done throughout my career is long range plans.
So in the spirit of anchoring this, and I appreciate that this slide is is back up. Thanks, Vicki, for queuing that up. I I would propose the following. Recognizing that the desire would be to spend an extended period of time in work session slash retreat format, I think we, you know, certainly can meet that request. I I would propose that we still present to you all a draft budget on the specified timeline here by May 18. And what I think that allows us to do is work with the information that we have. I mean, we're really looking at only eight workdays between now and the 18 anyway. So so what I would would propose is that draft budget creates a starting point for more of what the dialogue and feedback that we're getting from our community at that point can consist of. If the board would like to schedule a work session either later the week of the 18 or into the week of the I'm going to call it the 26th because that's Memorial Day week. I think we could flex that June 2. We could we could start with a later May work session date if we if we could get all our calendars together and or just preserve June 2 as another work session and then give ourselves permission to play with that June 15 date. I mean, again, we'd have to go no later than June 30. But if we wanted to to forego a June 15 meeting, giving ourselves as much time as possible, I think we can create some degree of flexibility there and and allow ourselves to work with real information that we'll have that informs next year, but also meets the expectation of planning out from where we go into next year and and then a few years beyond. And and before I say anymore, Dave, do you have any other thoughts on that? Because I know it asks a lot of you and your team. And I just want to make sure we're we're being thoughtful about the work commitment behind this as well.
No, I I think you're right, Casey. I think if we can get through this part of it, at the same time, planning for the for the future and looking at budgets, we can do, we can do both. But but I agree with you as far as getting something done. It's it would be the best at least to know what we know now and continue with what we have to provide you on the 18. So yeah, I'm in agreement.
So might I make a request on a draft budget, the 18?
Sure.
Actually, two requests. One is, I think as a board, it's important that we understand what all the the cash and real estate assets are that are at our disposal. In other words, the the thank you for sending us the 35 pages of small type line items. Quite a pleasure to do that exam. But there are a lot of interesting things in there. There's $585,000 held out for opening a new school, which is not going to happen in the next 24 months, no matter what.
Correct.
There there is an asset trying to orientate, orient myself to your right, Dr. Summers, that's not being fully utilized, that we valued what it would cost to utilize it. And we're going through an appraisal process now. Something is at our disposal, right? It's my understanding there may be a fund from the sale of the land out of Highway 83 to the Monument Academy organization that are at the board's disposal. So to Chris's point before decide how much we're going to spend, I think it's important to know how much we have and how much we want to keep and how much we want to slowly distribute over three, three years. And if we're wrong, it's only two years. What a great problem. And if we're right, what a wonderful place to work where your leaders and your guiders have the foresight and the fortitude to lead early, be prepared, take action and protect the students and the staff.
We can absolutely have that information down to a fine detail as we
Don't get to 35 pages, though. 32 is plenty.
Okay.
I I'd like to dovetail on some things that Matt and Chris have said in terms of laying out a three to five year budget. I think it can be really, really helpful in a lot of ways. And again, it doesn't have to be extraordinarily detailed, but sort of an overarching draft of sorts. But I think, you know, what comes to mind, I I too have reached out to former board members here in this district and in two other districts who were on their boards during the 2008 recession and I I continue to learn new things. And one of the things that I learned this past week was during one of those years, I believe it was 2008, there were two additional during, uh, one of those years, I believe it was 2008, there were two additional recisions of money from the state. And so I think to have a three or five-year, um, budget plan in place can offer us some resiliency. Um, if and when those types of things would occur and which we can anticipate, or I guess we're in a better position if we anticipate that they, they may occur. And I, I would feel better as a board member in terms of providing for the district if our board is sort of uh, leaning forward, eyes wide open that the additional things can occur, given how fluid this environment is.
Great point, Teresa. I, I might ask you all if you think, uh, because, you know, we had these different levels of, of, uh, reductions and we went with a 10%. Maybe we should go to the worst case for this initial draft and work from there.
Well, I, I'm in, in, uh, significant agreement that we at least need to have a model that shows whatever the minimum PPR is. So that we understand the challenge task animal, whatever term you want to use. That's before us because, and the idea when the state will have the April revenue numbers, that's the first full month that things were shut down.
My best sense of it is it's going to be calculated as part of their economic forecast that's, that's due out May 12th.
Do we have, um, any feel for their degree of accuracy, looking back at forecasts? And, and my reference point is CB, uh, Congressional Budget Office, they typically do these analyses of policies and then you go back 10 years and they were off by like 40 to 50%.
I, I don't really have a great point to offer up there. Dave, would, would you say in addition?
I don't either. I was just kind of thinking about even just as, as recent as last year. You know, they came in with our growth being higher. They came in with, with our funding being higher, but that was more, that pertained more to growth, not an economic.
Not revenues.
Yeah, not a revenue issue there. You know, we talk about, you know, we're, we refer back to the recession and this is, this is, this is uncharted. This is, this is more uncertain than, than that recession. When we look at, you know, you talk about, we should go the lowest. I mean, our reserves can help us this year, but if we have another hit, another $5 million hit, if, if this happens this year and then happens next year. I mean, it's a, it's a major concern, not just for us, but for the whole school system and the whole K-12 system. It's, it's a larger picture. So yeah, I'm sorry. I don't mean to paint such a negative picture. I'm just concerned about what we need to do and how we need to address this. And so if we need direction from the board that says, yeah, we want to, we want to, we want a a draft budget at a 15% cut. We, we can provide that for you. I just need that direction.
Could we ask for a draft budget at the PPR base? Because of.
I think it's the same.
Pardon me?
I say, I think at the base PPR rate, you're, you're at that 15%. That is the base. I think that's the base.
Exactly. So I think that's where we begin. Because everything that we've determined in our research and our discussion is unless Amendment 23 is repealed, that's the minimum we're going to get to work with. And given that, that they're looking at 10 to 20% reductions, we might as well be at that level, at least for planning purposes. And we can model up or down, but likely it's not going to go down. And to Matt's point, we're ready. We have, we have something stable we can bring to the students, the parents, staff and their community. And we've shown the foresight and the fortitude to get moving.
Agreed. And then I would like to know on the forecast for the 6452 student count, does that reflect any, any new information we have from open enrollment, which is done? And, you know, just updated, uh, more recent forecasts or, you know, I'd just like to have a, how reasonable is it? Is it being conservative too, or is it flatlined? The 6481 number that we've used is, is conservative. And that, we have to kind of, I need to formulate that with, with Tim because we have an average there. So it actually increases it a little bit. Yeah, I think we could look, um, at our, our most recent student enrollment and make sure that that number is, is as tight as it can be. And as, as conservative as it can be.
So I think that gives us good clarity and direction as far as what we can produce in the way of that draft budget. Again, I, I would reiterate, I think it makes the most sense to, to still share that with you all on May 18th. Play with the work session date either no later than June 2nd, obviously, but if we could either push that up by a week. Obviously, we're going to have to play with some calendars here, but, um, I, I think if we can use that work session as an extended budget dive, um, that we can make sure that we're providing uh, absolutely as much information as, as is available and as, as possible. I think that'll give us, uh, a good place to work from. Uh, and then again, we can give ourselves permission to play with that June 15th date if we decide to push that back at all.
The meeting that we're contemplating adding, I would propose that we, um, have it more of a board retreat format than a work session meeting.
Okay.
So, so Mr. Claussen, would you like to keep June 2nd as the work session then and, and add an additional treat date for sometime the last, either the second or, or third or last week of May?
Yes.
Okay. Um, rather than take our time doing that right now, would it be okay for us to find a date, uh, through Kathy and have that cemented? Uh, hopefully no later than close of business today?
That would be great. And if, if anyone's planning on being out of town during that period of time, if you would kindly send Kathy an email, I'm sure she would appreciate it. Is there anything else that we need to discuss on this topic? All right, moving forward to, um.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
Well, that, uh, as, as, uh, Casey and Dave were talking through, they start, uh, bringing forward, I wanted to add one thing to what Tiffany said.
Hey, Ron, can you start over? Um, you were breaking up there, please.
Any better now?
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to piggyback on something Tiffany said a while ago and, uh, with respect to, to having skin in the game. I noticed in the, uh, budget line items that there were a few things set aside for, uh, Board of Education. Actually, it wasn't a lot of money. But my point is this, anything that we can do, pony up first and lead by example has significant impact on the community. And it shows the staff that we're in this with them and we have skin in the game.
I agree.
So, so whatever you see in those line items where we can cut from Board of Education expenses, I would like to recommend that we do that. If there's places that's significant, like for example, there's a conference that's $500 and that doesn't make sense for a board member to pay out of his or her pocket, fine. But mileage and meals and all that kind of stuff is a great place for us to lead by example. And a great opportunity for us to call out that we're in this with you and we're willing to share in the changes.
Wonderful point, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you. All right. Next agenda item is some graduation plans. Dr. Summers?
So I'm going to have, uh, oh, great job, Vicky, you're on it. So, uh, what I would, just wanted to do, and this is more informational, uh, for the board's uh, understanding in regards to everything that we are, uh, talking about in the way of graduation. Uh, is a function right now of local guidelines that have been produced by El Paso County Health Department. So what you see here is a draft of those guidelines. Without going into a ton of detail on all of this, what I can share with you is that the county health department, uh, in addition to area superintendents, uh, and, and really ongoing conversations about still being committed to having a distinguished, uh, ceremony for our graduates, uh, is something that, uh, our area has been really an active conversation about. And so last week, uh, actually it was the week before, we sent out an update, uh, to our community that said, hey, our best hope is, is that we're able to do this in-person graduation. Um, at the time, we said, we really hope that we're able to accommodate, uh, at least a limited live audience. Uh, and what I wanted to share with you and what we'll have to share with our community here, uh, in the next couple of days is a revision to uh, what that, um, hope for limited live audience, uh, was, which is that the county has been declarative and, and very definitive in saying that that will not happen. If you want a graduation, uh, with your graduates, um, this is the way you're going to have to do it. And, uh, the best way to, to tell you about the status of these guidelines is that, uh, the county is in ongoing conversations, the health department is ongoing conversations with, uh, county commissioners uh, about a proven approval of this plan. And then this plan is still subject to approval at the state um, before we can press forward. So we have been, um, doing everything that we can on our end to work, um, from a place of, of within these guidelines, how might we still be able to accommodate, uh, the best graduation possible? The reason that a couple of weeks ago, when we shared the information, we wanted to, uh, project a, a later date, uh, for July, um, was we, we had the hope at that time of being able to wait it out and see if, if there was even a possibility of having, let's say, two guests per graduate. What we've been told since that time, and this was last Friday, uh, where we had a conference call, is that, that just, if you have that idea, you're not going to be able to implement it. Uh, so what we're doing at this point is we're continuing to respond um, or react rather to what the guidelines are. Uh, what you see here is, I'm not going to go through bullet by bullet, but essentially this would, this would accommodate um, graduates, a limited staff, audience, uh, and give us, um, more or less, if you guys saw the Air Force Academy commencement, be a graduation that would resemble, uh, what was demonstrated there just a few weeks back. So this is a conversation that we're continuing to have with our high schools, um, and will, uh, update with our, our community. But, but at the end of the day, it really doesn't behoove us any longer uh, to maintain a later, uh, summer date because if, if the graduation that we're proposing is basically going to look the same, I think part of the feedback we're responding to is um, recognizing where our students are, allowing them to have again, that, that distinction of a ceremony that's befitting of all their accomplishments. Which, let me just say on top of that, that's the least we can do at this point. My heart just goes out to all of our seniors and, and to their families and Class of 2020 as a whole. Um, so much has been taken away from them. So I, I'm inclined to do everything that we can within these guidelines uh, to still make for a memorable event. It would be live streamed. Uh, it would be something that all of, uh, our community would be able to, uh, access in that way. We are doing beyond just the graduation, a lot of other, uh, ceremonies, uh, as, as best we can virtually and, and other, uh, recognitions. Um, that our high school principals and their staffs are doing a great job and, and families are coming together to make all that happen. But I just wanted to share with you because there's a lot of questions still about what does that, that mean? And, and we're going to have to create an update. Um, more than likely, we are going to move up, uh, that graduation date to, um, sometime, I would say, early to mid-June. Uh, we're, we're currently figuring out, uh, what that change of date will mean and we'll, we'll share that with our community as soon as, uh, practical. But um, I just wanted to make sure that you all knew what the latest was here, um, that our best hopes for, um, a, a ceremony that, that involved our families to the extent that was possible, uh, is just not something that, uh, our county health department feels comfortable signing off on. So uh, in order for us to play by those rules, uh, we're, um, sharing those with you here and, and we'll, uh, continue to keep you updated as we get closer to what that, uh, that commencement date, uh, will look like. So any questions that, that I can address here at least?
No question, but I just want to acknowledge Casey that this in no way looks, um, like what you wanted to provide for our seniors in, in your district and I, you know, you, essentially it appears that your hands are a bit tied here in terms of what you can do, but, um, you know, I think, uh, we as a board can do whatever we can to support the, the new and revised plan in June.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I, go, go ahead, Ron.
I just want to add, the fact that we're doing it is huge. So kudos to you and the team for stepping out there and making a commitment. The only other question I have is with respect to the county health department. Did they essentially say, we're not changing anything through the entire summer?
Yes.
Okay. And they're, have a pretty good history of keeping to that commitment when they say it?
We were, we were, yeah, we were told pretty much unequivocally. You want a graduation, this is how it's going to happen. So don't even try to do, uh, anything beyond it.
And they have the legal authority to do that, I assume, given that we're under the state of emergency, yeah?
Uh, that, that's a nuanced, uh, question in response that they're working on all of that. So what I would just say is this is fairly as much of this is, uh, kind of uncharted or unprecedented, but, um, given the state of the state, this, they are within their, um, authority, uh, to be able to, to take that stand.
Given that we may horribly said have to do this again next year, it'd be nice to have a credit versus an expense with that, with that group, right?
It's a great way to put it.
Yeah, okay.
In, in KC, I presume, um, the venue will be the same Drew Bree, Drew Bree Stadium?
Uh, Don Breeze, uh, although I like, that's a great, no, no, no pun intended.
Just was thinking of Drew Franzo, he walked by a little, two minutes ago.
Oh, awesome, awesome. Uh, no, I, yeah, at this point, uh, Matt, we, we do, I look, I will back you on that. What I will tell you is that we are wanting to make sure that our stadium is able to accommodate, uh, from a sound and a, a live stream uh, and all the production that goes into that, to be able to do that, um, as efficiently as an effective, as effectively as possible. Um, so we are, there is the potential of, of possibly a change in venue, but I am not going to know that until later, uh, this afternoon, when, when we have a conversation about that. Um, but again, that would be shared, uh, with our community as soon as we are, uh, landing on, on exactly what that, that is. Uh, the, the backup or, well, the alternate venue, uh, would be the old Skysock Stadium that we're, we're also talking about. And that's a place that a lot of, uh, other districts are also, uh, taking note of. So it may actually make it a little bit easier for us to do that there. Um, but if we can do it in our home, uh, space, we'll, we'll certainly make every effort to do so.
Excellent. All right, any other comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Miss Upchurch.
Um, so it's important to me that we, that our, our seniors, uh, and those that have educated them throughout their journey know that we're there, uh, in support and love. When I look at this, is, is it better for us as board members to not be on site, all five of us, or is that? I just want to make sure that we can pull this off in the most, um, efficient way possible without any, any red flags or, or, um, uh, concerns.
Yeah, Tiffany, that's, that's a great question. Um, I, to be honest with you, I, well, it might be worth just asking you guys what your preference is on that. I think we can pull it off. As long as we're maintaining that six-foot spacing, but I, to be honest, I don't know enough of the stage dimensions and how, you know, one of the things we've talked about is this will not look like a traditional, uh, world arena type graduation. It'll still be traditional in the way that we, we have our ceremonies and so forth, um, to the extent that we can do that. But, um, I, I guess I might ask that question back to you all and say, what, what is your preference there?
Whatever's going to be most memorable for the students.
Okay.
Yeah, what I would propose is we just.
May I ask you a question while we think here for a minute? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So Casey, I'm going to go back 50 years. 50 years ago, I was a senior in high school. And we had our graduation and JR Simplot spoke to us. And I didn't wait till the next morning. I actually had a ride out that night because I wanted to go live in San Francisco for the summer. And the point I'm making is I stayed for that graduation because it meant a lot to me, right? I mean, I actually finished something. That was pretty cool. But I can guarantee you that your students aren't waiting for July. I'm not sure they're going to wait around for June. I'm not sure they're going to wait around for June. I would highly recommend, given the guidelines that you have. That we follow the example of the Air Force Academy and do it as quickly as possible because these young kids and kids come first. They have plans. They want to get on with life. And so it may be convenient for adults to push it out. I I want to just suggest that we really look at trying to do this as. As originally planned, and I know it's not convenient and whatnot, the whole thing's different, but. The longer we push it out, you're just going to lose more and more students every day.
So Chris, I apologize. I appreciate that comment. I don't know if I made myself clear enough in my initial summary. Our initial date of July, I think it was 23rd and 24th, was designed to create. In its ideal state. An opportunity for a limited live audience, which we thought at the time, we would still be able to to perhaps entertain. Since we know that is not a possibility any further, we are tech taking steps to push that date further up. So. We can't do it any earlier than June 1st. That is, we've we've been told we cannot do any May graduations, period. So beginning June 1st and then based on all the other logistical variables that we're trying to figure out, we're envisioning an early June. Early to mid June graduation. The other thing that does, and I will just tell you some of the feedback we received. From parents who have been really understanding through all of this is that we know we have some students that that could be deploying, could be taking off for whatever. Is happening. So we we are committed to doing it much sooner than what we had originally proposed. So I apologize again if I didn't make that more clear.
No, I I got it. I was just reinforcing that from a kid's perspective, right? It's they want to get on with life.
Yeah, and we and we owe it to them to to allow them to to cross this finish line, have this rite of passage. And and like I said, I mean, it's. Kind of the least we can do at this point. We'd love to be able to do as much as we possibly can, but. That was overwhelming feedback that we received as well is that people really were not in favor of a virtual graduation. I mean, again, we are doing other recognitions along those lines, but but we really are committed to seeing this through. And doing it in as much of an honoring way as possible. So I guess back to that other point. What what I heard from you, Tiffany, is. You know, whatever we can manage, let's manage it and let's make it memorable for our kids. So, you know, in the event that we're not able to maybe accommodate all five board members. I just want to make sure that I'm I'm representing where you all are as a team and how we're approaching this.
Well, I only have one request. I think that the five board members should be let out of a plane. And then, you know, coast in and land right there in Drew Bree Stadium. And the one closest to the 50 yard circle in the center wins something. I don't care what.
That's that's a great visual.
You go first, Chris. I'll be right behind you, buddy.
Casey, I know that there have been meetings with senior parents and I don't know if there's a continuing, but if that might be a source of. Obviously getting some better understanding as to what will make it most meaningful for them. As far as. Me personally, as one board member being there, if that kept someone else away. You know, that's neither here nor there for me. It's purely how, what will be most impactful and meaningful for the students and the families. Even though it will be virtual. On the other hand, as a board, I wonder if there's a way that we might be able to recognize our seniors, even if we're not there in person. Whether that's a handwritten note or or something to that effect. I think that's something the board can consider as well.
There have been some really creative things that I've seen on the news and online. That principals and teachers have done for seniors. Around the country that that. Just makes me think that if there's a way we can make lemonade out of this thing, whether we're there or not, let's do it. We've all, we've got 600 of them maybe net total?
Close to, I think it's just short of that.
Okay, so it's not a Herculean task, it's just a task.
How many?
I want to, I want to say it's 275 and 270. I might be off a little bit there, but.
Give or take 10%.
All right. Well, good conversation and Casey, please keep us posted.
Okay.
Fall contingency planning.
All right, we're moving and grooving. So what I'd like to do first, and I'm going to ask. Dr. Benton to share with you. As a starting point, some results around participation, because I think it helps frame this conversation in. Light of some data that we have, so I believe we're queuing this up for you here and I'm going to let Dr. Benton take it from here.
So we had some questions around what our general participation rates were, and this is information that the principals pulled together. Keeping in mind the first week after spring break, we did not, it was really about just making sure students had access. I also included on there the definition of participation. So this is not necessarily. Students completing and turning in work in every single class and and meeting every academic expectation. Rather, it is a documented amount of students who are reaching, basically we're documenting the two major goals that we had, which. Is a connection with students and continuity of learning. So this is making sure that the students have logged in. Or submitted something or communicated with the teacher. At least twice for elementary and middle school and at least once since we're on an alternating block schedule for high school per week. And so what you can see is the participation rates are pretty consistent. You will see that LPMS has had a reduction in participation. And they are working to try and make sure students are engaged, but it's not a consistent number of students who aren't engaged, meaning it can vary from week to week. So I also wanted to give you information about basically students in total that we have just not been able to get in contact with at all during this remote learning time. So kudos to the staff because what you'll see the four bullets beneath. The data demonstrate exactly what the staff are doing. And we've had it to where teachers are dropping supplies and materials off at at students' doorsteps. They're they're setting up separate office hours. We even have staff who are texting students to try and make sure that they are doing okay and if they need anything. I I know that our staff have blurred the lines of the work week to where they're also reaching out to students on Saturdays and Sundays. If that accommodates the parents and the students' schedule better. So I think our participation rates are pretty consistent across the board. You'll. Though see that obviously Lewis Palmer Middle School has had a slight dip. So any questions?
I just want to note that that's a, these are really good participation rate numbers.
Yes, they're incredibly high, especially compared to some of the other districts, but keep in mind, we have done a lot of things to try and make sure that students have access. Including dispersment of about 600 devices, over 100 hotspots. And we've also, like I said, for parents and students where they're struggling with making schedules work. I mean, we are, our folks are really working hard to accommodate students and families. I think that's what these numbers also show is a commitment for that continuity continuity of learning from families, but also the work that our staff is doing.
Dr. Ben?
Sir.
Where do these numbers fit in terms of your particular expectations? For the students and your academic team? And then secondly. Independent participation as far as actual learning and retention. Assuming, and I know it's a big assumption, that we have the opportunity to return to physical school in the fall. Where are we on an academic scale in terms of how much we need to make up and how long will it take to make up?
So first of all, what I would say is that the participation rates are are terrific. Had conversations with other districts and their participation rates, some of them hover at the 60%. And it's it's a function of access and equity too, when you think about it. So the the rates are very encouraging. On the flip side, though, to answer your question around learning. We lost, we're losing eight to nine weeks of the calendar year. And when you think about the amount of content that's typically taught within that timeframe, because you also have to take out assessments, so that's also our assessment window. You're looking at potentially about five weeks of lost true instructional content time, if you take out all the other components. And again, this is very broad and changes a little bit by level, but we don't know yet what the gap is. And that's the honest truth, because one of the things that we're trying not to do is to punish students who aren't able to turn everything in. Or punish students who can't actually access learning in the way that we're delivering it. So in terms of, as we call the fall planning for the gap, I believe Casey's going to be talking about that. We talked about fall planning. We know we have to plan for gaps and compact curriculum when we return. So we're going to be looking at essential learnings completely differently. We're going to be going back to core standards. It's going to be an interesting and yet heavy lift, I think, for staff and as well as students. And, you know, we don't have our normal local data, like we normally give the map assessment for K8. In in math and reading. We have no state assessment data to be able to monitor student growth over time from year to year. So we're going to be looking for other ways in the fall when we return, working with staff on formative assessment measures to be able to gauge student learning loss.
Sounds like an opportunity for innovation too.
It is another growth opportunity, yes, sir.
I would only have one comment to make, and that is that. This has probably had more impact on parents as well, and I appreciate the staff and all they've done and the participation rate is high. But I can guarantee you from my conversation with many parents, it's increased their participation rate as well, which. In some respects is good, but it's also wear and tear that they're not used to.
Absolutely. Support from families has been essential with this. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Benton? All right, next agenda item is board member comments.
Mr. Claussen, I did, I apologize. I wasn't clear enough upfront. So I did want to take you through just a brief. Framework that we're using as we talk more about preparations for the fall. So I believe Vicky's going to bring up a PowerPoint. I promise to keep this one much more brief, but I want to want, just wanted to give some shape. To how we are beginning to have these conversations. And what I will describe this as, well, first of all, it's affecting everybody. So what you'll see in these slides, these were not slides that we. Developed ourselves, but being part of the regional superintendent group that I have the privilege to collaborate with other colleagues on. What this presentation was is is for a few of us that were on a call just even yesterday and and I thought it was. A great way to create some context for how we're engaging in these planning conversations. So. How do we prepare for opening up schools successfully for fall 2020? And what I'm going to do is ask Vicky to go down, but I think it's the fifth slide. Okay, so. Just briefly, this is a group that is a network consortium of districts, both at a regional and at a national level. And so part of how we're thinking about this pandemic is we recognize that. The bulk of our nation has been shut down for some time as a result of. The pandemic. And and if you go to the next slide, there, Vicky, thank you. What we're also starting to see more and more, and I think, you know, anytime you turn on the news, there's certainly a lot of. Indication that we're experiencing some dissonance as we've sort of shifted from, how do we respond in the immediacy of this? We're now. Talking a lot about at what point are we coming out and and at what point are we in a position we can resume? Quote unquote, normal. And I I think it's fair to say that that the best analogy that I've heard is this is not like a switch that you can just flip back on and say, we're going to go right back to the way it was. Before this started, but we also recognize that there's a tension that exists and there's a lot of different opinions and perspectives about what. This dynamic consists of. So Vicky, next slide, please. Our best approach at this point is to think about how we prepare for opening in fall of 2020 with. Back to that that term of agility or agile approach. And so what you're seeing here is kind of a three-phase. Design to how we're developing those, developing those plans and validating those plans and then modifying those as we need to. The next few slides help help create a little more context there. So this is a framework that I think is is a nice way to begin to organize. What we're looking at in some different buckets, but at the core of the issue, and I think it's important for us to to. Be reminded that this is a public health crisis first and foremost, which is really at that center. And it's also acknowledging that we don't have control over all the variables as that public health crisis continues to manifest. What we do have control over and the ability to influence, you can see, starting in that upper right-hand quadrant. How we think about our instructional core, everything from our curriculum to our students, to our teachers, school schedules, staff schedules. We recognize that there will be multiple impacts that we have to plan and address. As we're preparing for next fall. If you go just clockwise then down, our resources, another big conversation, obviously, we spent a lot of time this morning. Talking about budgetary impact. There's the impact of time, there's also our, the impact of people. And so how does that situate also within a stakeholder? Conversation, again, thinking about our our students, our parents, our board. What are we thinking about in terms of labor from a staff perspective and then our community as a whole? And then there's that operational component. So everything from our facilities to maintenance, transportation, food service, et cetera. So what I, real quick, Vicky, before you go forward, there's something else I wanted to call out, which which I think is really important. From the standpoint of how we achieve coherence among each of these categories and how we also consider. What equity means and what that looks like as we think about the individual impact to our students and our families and and staff. Et cetera. So one way that we can approach this and and it really helped kind of solidify for me the fact that we we have. Teams within our current district structure and design that can tackle each of these issues. Independently and then begin to bring it back into focus so that what we're working toward is a coherent design. Of how we do envision that return. And then, Vicky, if you can, next slide then. So these are the three likely scenarios that we're starting with, and this this resembles a lot of what we've had conversations. With our partners at CDE and and again, what individual districts are beginning to process in in greater detail. So. We could envision everything from starting the year off, still in a remote learning. Paradigm. So due to public health concerns, students would be required to learn remotely, such as we're experiencing right now. And so you saw some of the data of how we've. Engaged our kids through that process, but I do think there there's a real. Distinction to make between how we've been dealing with it this spring and how we would maybe have to envision it as we go into the fall. Then you see in that yellow box, a modified on-campus scenario where we have significant changes, including social distancing. Alternate schedules, modified capacity, a lot that we would have to be addressing within that frame. And then finally, thinking about. This from a hybrid perspective. So what does teaching and learning look like with both students, some students at home, some students in class and. The confluence of different variables that that come into focus there. On the right-hand side, you also see the potential, which I think we we hear. From time to time is, hey, this may extend into the fall, into the winter, into next spring. And and so at what point are we in more of a remote learning position? At what point are we envisioning that modified on-campus? And and including that as a hybrid learning model that we would need to to prepare for and be charged to implement. And then the last slide just gives you a sense of more or less that implementation approach. So really, our our development and. Plan design, starting with analysis and development. Could be to to start by convening for working groups, dealing with each of those respective categories, instructional core, operations, stakeholder and resources. And forming some type of steering committee, which allows for that check for coherence and and insurance of equity. As we develop those plans, a critical phase that we're going to have to to think really critically about is that validation and refinement. So how are we validating our approach with other best practices and other district practices so that we can establish? And codify those district priorities, identify and articulate measurable goals and and create really an initial draft of what that opening plan is. Obviously, the incorporation of community and stakeholder. With obviously, the incorporation of community and stakeholder feedback in that process. And then finally, get gearing up and readying ourselves for that implementation phase, which you know, you see in that kind of arrow, the remaining flexible is going to be really important for us. So how do we create those detailed action steps for implementation, track and monitor progress, but also be really transparent and mindful of criteria where schools may have to be open or closed depending on different circumstances? So that is a 30,000, maybe closer to about 15,000 foot view. Doesn't give you a lot of what are those those details of the plan? Because to be quite frank, we've not spent a ton of time up to this point, really creating what those detailed action steps are. And quite honestly, the reason for that is we've been spending a lot of time dealing with the now, with the today and with the tomorrow. We know that we're going to have to begin to shift that conversation really now and over the next several weeks as we gear up. And one of the challenges with that is we're also in, working towards summer. And so I don't want to create an expectation of a lot of work for folks when they're not typically working. On the flip side, we want to make sure that we're creating enough of a place of, here's what's predictable, here's what's working right now. And there is a lot that we can learn from how we've already approached the way that we've implemented remote learning. But there's a lot more questions about what does that, what does that mean as we're kicking the year off in that potential sphere? And how do we, again, plan for all those contingencies? So I just thought it would be helpful to to help you understand more of of this. And I know that doesn't necessarily address a lot of the immediate questions like, we want to know what the fall looks like today. Unfortunately, that's not something that, even if I provided that, the chances of that changing are going to be like 100%, but I think we can say here is what we can begin to work with. And, Vicky, do you have that other basic part of me? It's the education P-12 PDF, the remote learning for the rest of the school year with limited exceptions? You can just pull that up real briefly. That just gives you a sense of what we're working with today and how we're also answering questions around, well, what does even the summer look like? We have summer programs. We have, let's see what she's, okay, very good. Thank you again. So we're essentially implementing these guidelines right now in terms of how we're addressing workspace, support for employees, support for for students in the event that they're in our schools, which is not currently happening in our community, but could potentially happen as as early as June 1st. And I know that's a starting point for that conversation is we need to specify what exactly we're willing to take on as we go into the summer, making sure that those plans are being vetted and approved. And then that could present somewhat of a blueprint for how we begin to talk more about the actual hard to say full-scale return, but but maybe at a mid or larger scale return as we prepare for the fall. So again, this is a lot of information that we're throwing at you, but it's part of what we're continuing to wrestle with and making sure that we're addressing each of these issues, affording ourselves some of that flexibility, but keeping in focus. And this draws back to our strategic plan. It talks a lot about where, what we want for our kids, what we want for our staff, and what's important for our community through this conversation.
Questions for Dr. Summers?
Yeah, I appreciate all the information. I just wanted to relay from some community members who are wondering about the online summer session, which comes up pretty quickly. Do you have an idea of, and I know this is really difficult, you know, by such and such a date, you'll have more information on the online summer session? Is that, is that something you might be able to?
So actually, I'm going to let Dr. Benton respond to that because she's been working with our staff in preparation.
Again, obviously, if the answer is, we don't know, well, that's, that's fine.
Actually, I think we have a little more than just that.
High school, summer school information for all online went out, I believe, yesterday. It should have gone out to high school families. When we were told that we could no longer have brick and mortar sessions, that's when we had to switch everything to online. And so we spent this last week modifying everything to be able to to make that happen. So sign up is live, actually, and it information should be on both high school websites. Middle school is a little bit different in terms of what's available for them, but it their offerings have always been online. And so that's a non-issue. The answers that we still need to to get are for our ESY or extended school year. So those are families that I know Rick and Stephanie and Michelle and they will be working with families as they develop plans for that.
Super. Thank you. And I know this all involves more of a lift than usual, so appreciate the extra effort.
Thanks for that question, Teresa. The other questions I think we're hearing from time to time are around any summer camps or programs of that variety, as well as what practices or the potential of sports look like. As we know, we offer a lot of those over the summer. So what I can tell you is we're still figuring out exactly what a potential start date would be for us to accommodate camps and or sports. One of the biggest challenges, I think, right now, but it makes a lot of sense is that we're still working with a no more than 10 individuals at a particular gathering. So that's something that I'm hoping that we can gain some additional clarity on here in the next week.
And anything that's over that $50,000 mark does require board signature and board authority. We have put together a very comprehensive, very intentional and very lean proposal for this year. But the idea being that we were are requesting funds from this current year that have not been expended to be able to be expended for this purchase, as well as funds for next year's proposed budget, which I understand is completely in draft form. And what we're asking for would include a reduction in that budget of about $60,000. So the total ask for the purchase is a $600,000 expenditure. Keeping in mind, again, that about $330,000 of that expenditure is from this year's current budget. And the remaining expenditure would be planned for for next year's budget. And you may say, well, why is it so much? Well, what it includes, and the PowerPoint presentation does have a detail of those numbers. We, and I'm trying to recall this from memory, so we'll see how I do. Basically, we had 45 teachers over about 824 hours deliberate and plan and align curriculum to standards and select resources. And the resources that you are, that you've approved both last month and as well as what's up for approval in May are resources that our teachers believe that we, our students need access to, to be able to move their learning forward. And some of the adoptions that we are looking at replacing are from 2005. The reason that the adoptions were not, we've typically recommended a five to seven-year cycle for adoption replacement. But obviously, what happened during the last revision cycle was that we were, we had a reduction in funds. So we have several learning materials that are actually older than the students who are using them at the high school level. It's important to note that the lift for learning requires that teachers have access to digital resources. And the idea that resources are textbooks is not actually accurate. When you look at what we put in front of the board for our ninth to 12th grade English Language Arts, it's a combination of some print and mostly digital. That's very, very standard now for for basically replacement cycles. The resources for print actually cost more now than digital resources because digital resources are much easier to keep up. You don't have to reprint materials. With all of that said, the request that we're asking for includes about a third of the devices that we're asking for, replacement devices for machines and continuous growth in their field. When we think about investing in our staff, it also includes investing in their own learning. Our staff are lifelong learners. That's why they're in the field of education. And giving them access to new resources also gives them access to new training. And the greatest, the latest and greatest in terms of innovation with what they can do with students with these, with these resources. In order for them to be able to do that, though, we do need the devices for students to be able to access. So, Vicky, you can scroll to the next one. So how did we get here? The, these purchases are, would impact basically 3,615 of our students at all eight, all eight sites. And I think that's a very important number. I also believe that by purchasing engaging materials, providing the resources that they need and making sure that the learning is relevant, not only influences student achievement, but it also influences teacher retention because teachers know that they're being invested in as well. So what we're asking for, Vicky, if you want to scroll to that last slide, is about $575,000 for device replacement as well as purchase. It does include about 2,000 devices, again, 660 of those replacement devices to include staff. And the additional dollars are to basically utilize Chrome devices, Chromebooks, Chrome and Chrome carts to support the curriculum adoptions for this next year. And these devices last on average about five years, so it does align with the traditional cycle for adoption. So what questions do you have?
Dr. Benton, I have a question. In terms of the, so all of these are Chromebooks, as I understand it?
Not all Chrome devices. Some of them are actually staff devices as well that we need to replace that are Dell Windows-based machines. And we do have a couple of labs that do need to remain fixed, Windows-based labs due to software requirements. So that's listed in this, that's part of the 660.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't read all the details on that one slide. But with regard to the Chromebooks and and the topic we just left in the agenda, would you say this adds to the agility of the district learning profile?
Absolutely. We, we know that we already handed out about 600 devices to families. We would love to be able to support learning. But the idea behind this is that the teachers can utilize these devices within their own classrooms. And so even if we went to a hybrid model, we'd still have devices for students while in in class as well as providing access if they needed it outside.
Okay. And then just another clarification question more for myself. Are these the same Chromebooks that would be used for testing as well? Are they used in multi-dimensions?
Yes. So we would not, we're not actually seeking, right now, our assets that we use for testing, we are not seeking to replace. We consider those end of life. So the devices that the board approved, gosh, five years ago, are now, they're no longer being replaced. Instead, this allows for greater flexibility for students to actually assess in the classroom with their classroom teacher. And it allows for a decreased amount of time of modified schedules. So the idea being that we would be looking at placing devices in grades six through 12. The devices that are already in sixth grade would then help support assessment that's occurring in the, in the grades three through five.
Thanks. That's all I have at the moment.
And just clarity again. So 330,000 of your, first of all, I guess I'm a little confused. 660,000 is the total amount that you're asking for here?
No, sir. It should be a total of 575,000 is what the the original ask is for. That's what we were able to get the the dollar amount down to. We do need about $25,000 at some point for carts.
Okay, so about 600,330 of which was already in this year's budget, right? So it's not new budgeted money?
Correct.
Okay, so you're really looking for 270 roughly?
Right, which the, in theory, would be part of next year's proposed budget. If that were a flat model, let's just say if, we would be looking at another 330,000 that technology is budgeted for. In the past, we used to come forward with prior boards and ask for capital improvement dollars to purchase technology. Two years ago, it was placed into the general operating, you know, into Fund 10, into the general operating budget. So this is something that we've already been budgeting for. And the idea would be that we are just asking to allow for the purchase of these. We're not asking for additional dollars.
Yeah. So Dave Cruz, is this 245 in next year's budget presently?
It is.
Yes, it is. Yes.
Okay. All right. That's what I wanted to understand. Thank you.
Can that E S S E R for use, be used for the purchase of this?
My understanding is that student technology is an allowable expenditure for the CARES money.
It is or is not?
It is.
Thanks.
So, Dr. Benton, if I understand correctly, and I don't have my my notes from our meeting earlier or last week, I believe it was, but there's roughly about 1,800, 1,800 new devices that we're buying for students. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. What are your thoughts about deferring some of those costs to parents? I'm not a big fan of bring your own device, but, you know, considering that we roughly have 6,500 students and only 600 of those students have requested the use of Chromebooks leads one to believe that they might have their own devices at home. What are your thoughts about, you know, asking our parents to either, you know, have their kids bring their own devices to school or defray some of those costs by, you know, a leasing program or something of that nature? This kind of dovetails into what we had discussed about, you know, looking at reduction of costs and so forth.
So the first question that you asked around bring your own device, the rationale around bringing your own device, it sounds great, right? Except for the fact that you're going to have students who have a variety of, they, a variety of devices and a teacher trying to help students access curriculum and content utilizing a variety of devices. You would need additional personnel at each site to help support students with the variety of devices that they would have. So I believe there's not a huge cost savings in that because you have a loss of instructional time when I say that there are 10 different devices within a classroom setting for the teacher to help trouble in terms of access. So that's one key piece of it. In terms of cost and having parents help with that cost, there is always an option to have a conversation, you know, a lease-to-own model or an increase in technology access fee. And that's something that the board could definitely consider.
Are there any, I'm sorry, go, Miss Church?
So do we need to, is there benefit? Well, I see benefit. Is there a downfall to approving the purchase for part of it now and part, and then proving it for the 245 for next year? Does it need to be one package?
So the the proposal in front of you is, one of the reasons we were able to get the cost down is for volume pricing. And so that would, what that would entail is us going back to the vendor to to split the purchasing into two separate purchases. It's not that it can't be done. It absolutely can be done. But that's how we were able to get the cost down.
Dr. Ben, does it, is there also a factor of lead time in terms of getting the devices before the August start date?
Yes. So one of the concerns that we had and the reason we brought this earlier is that right now, devices are 45 to 55 days out from purchase. So when you think about the amount of time that's going to take for our tech department to be able to prepare these devices for August, the sooner we have the ability to purchase these, the better for deployment, the more successful we'll be.
Dr. Benton?
Yes, sir.
I apologize. More technical difficulties here, speaking of new laptops and Chromebooks. Want to be first in line, but did anybody ask a question about TCO over the course of contract?
In terms of total cost of ownership, basically, the majority of these devices are ready to rock and roll. They're very low cost in terms of total cost of ownership. And because the Chrome devices themselves, we typically have warranties on those devices as well as the ability to repair internally. In terms of the Dell devices, our technicians are, we have multiple tiers of technicians to be able to repair those. The cost of a typical Chrome device is about $250. So when you think about, we can leverage that for a lifecycle of about five years. It's a, it's a pretty effective cost, total cost of ownership overall.
What about the code, maintenance, software licenses, cybersecurity software and all that kind of stuff?
That is all, so that, the purchasing includes the licensing component that we need within our Google Apps for Education, all the G suite, whatever you want to call it. And in terms of, because these are all web-based, we do use ClassLink. We do have a single sign-on feature that we do have these devices launched to. So, and that's just an ongoing. Um, and that's just an ongoing annual subscription. Um, but that's not in this purchasing cost, it doesn't ask, it doesn't cost us more per device. It's, uh, it's actually site license.
Is it incremental the budget or already in the budget?
Already budgeted for.
The reoccurring cost?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Last question is, you mentioned before I so rudely had to step away technologically, of course, that this would cover about half the students, right?
Um, basically, yes, that in terms of the number of students that would benefit from this purchase, correct?
Okay, so my question is how many, what percent of our student population?
Uh-oh, did I lose him or is it?
One thing, thing two is, uh.
Hey, Ron, can you repeat that question?
What percentage of our student population, staff population will be able to take advantage of this opportunity?
Okay.
In general, of having a one-to-one device to employee slash student ratio. And then secondly, how far are we from utopia? And what does that look like, knowing that every kindergarten, kindergarten may not need a laptop? My question is, how do we, how do we maximize the student and staff experience during their years of District Thirty-eight and provide the maximum agility? So that whether we have a pandemic, an earthquake, a snowstorm, or a sunny day where everybody's healthy, we're, we're rocking and rolling in their academic experience.
So to answer your first question in terms of percentage, um, the idea behind this is that we have, we already have about three thousand devices in the district. That's a ballpark estimate. Half the devices, um, are Chrome devices, half are, are, uh, Windows-based devices. Keeping in mind, we have certain devices that are fixed devices that are for intentional purposes, like the way that are very software-specific.
Right, and servers and a few other things too, yeah?
Correct, correct. So when you're looking at actual mobile devices, we have about fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred Chrome-type devices. When you're thinking about one-to-one, does this get us closer to that? Yes, but that's not really the intent behind it. The intent behind it is while we have, while we continue to purchase curriculum that does require digital access, that we provide that access, um, within the classroom by teacher. But the cool piece is that by, by infusing about fourteen hundred more devices for grades six through twelve, it shifts the additional devices we already have, um, so that those become available for other students during other parts of the day. So, um, the, like, the example is sixth grade, so we're asking for a minimum of two carts uh, per sixth grade, um, and it obviously Bear Creek's, uh, more like four carts. But the idea being that the carts that they already had or the devices they already had set aside for sixth grade use then get to be redistributed back for K-five use. So in terms of percentage, you're looking at about, um, if we increase, you're looking about a one to, you know, two in terms of device to student, but if we do this purchase. Even though at the same time, we can't really utilize the, the fixed, um, devices in, in that ratio.
So what does utopia look like? If budget was not an item and it was purely at maximizing the academic and staff experience, how far are we from there?
Oh, gosh, Ron, um, I don't know that I, we've defined utopia because we always still live in reality, but, um, something about Matt's always, what is it, plan for the worst or something, um?
If you don't give us a goal, we can't hit it.
Okay, so everybody always talks about one-to-one. And I would say that one-to-one, um, isn't necessarily utopia because not every single thing that happens with a student is utilizing a device. So I would say that if you're looking at one-to-one, uh, looking at, you know, grades three, four, starting from there, um, and in a K-two setting, having a variety of devices for students to learn on. The other limitation of one-to-one is that you have a singular type of device for every kid, and we want agility with our learners. So we want them to be able to go between an i-device and, uh, a Chrome device and a Windows-based device. So utopia is giving them lots of options within the learning environment and not necessarily just dedicating a one-to-one. It's the same with staff. I'd love to be able to give staff choice in the devices that we give access to, but we don't have the infrastructure to support that. We also don't have the technicians to support that. So that's where we go with a singular type device, um, to support staff. So utopia is flexibility, um, as well as a lot more funding.
Wow, there's the zinger.
Yeah.
At some, do you have, or at some juncture, can you provide us a gap analysis?
Utopia?
Yeah, I mean, to really get, to make us the most competitive, competitive district in this area in the state, what does it look like?
Well, it involves a lot more than just an actual device for students.
Exactly right, exactly.
Yeah, you'd be looking at interactive technology, you'd be looking at increased access to STEM tools in elementary setting. Um, so well, part of the goals, sorry.
As we go through all these cuts, it does always beget opportunities. And sometimes we look for other ways to do things. And we would like to keep in mind how to maximize the student-staff experience on the way.
Great.
So if there's a better way to help us with that in this area, please let us know.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me, if I might, piggyback on what Ron just said. I know that Mesa County Valley School District Fifty-One, a number of years ago, um, did an RFP for, um, cloud-based system, that's a hybrid, it's more the infrastructure. I mean, the programs you're talking about can be delivered in more than one way.
Yes.
And it's possible to have cloud-based servers that do all the horsepower, and they're always updated and maintained currently, where you have devices that are not as expensive as these Chromebooks you're talking about, that are just access points, remote terminals, or you could call them dumb devices. But it gives you access to the power of that larger server in the cloud. And so there are alternatives just for infrastructure. Cause I'm not going to talk about what you're delivering through the infrastructure, but the infrastructure itself, uh, there are alternatives to what you're proposing here that are fairly cost-efficient.
So my question would be also, um, not that we can put that demand, but can PTOs, when PTO, when our building PTOs are looking at, uh, fundraising opportunities and where the best thing for their buck is, is it feasible to, can that be a help to get us to, uh, that goal that, that Ron is speaking of?
So we, the device count does include, um, what PTOs have also purchased, if we've put that back into a rotation. The other piece to keep in mind is that when we talk about replacement devices, we're talking about things that we know and can account for budgetarily. Um, a lot of the PTO purchases are one-time purchases with not as, as Ron would say, total cost of ownership consideration or total cost of replacement consideration. So yes, it does help with some of the expansion, uh, of learning opportunities, say within the media centers and things like that. But there is not an ability for us as a district to come in and support that long-term with a total cost of replacement.
And I, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm going back to the, the, the E S S E R money. Is it, uh, can it be applied retroactively? So if we approve this today and then we end up getting that funding, um, can it be used retroactively to offset that two forty-five cost?
So, um, that's a great question, but my understanding of, um, how this purchase would work is we would go ahead and initiate the PO and make it a July one, um, purchase date. Um, and so we would have answers to that in terms of budget transfer at that point in time within the budgetary year.
Let me just add, that would not be the, that I think would, uh, be advisable, it would more be applied toward next year's technology allocation, not a retroactive application to this year's budget. Dr. Benton, as far as the competitive bid process, um, I'm looking at the first page and it looks like the vendor would be Trox, formerly CDI Troxel. And it says only vendor capable of execution. So do we feel that, um, if the board moves forward with approving this purchase, that, you know, um, we've negotiated and, and we're receiving a, a good deal on these devices?
Yes, and, and we have gone out for RFP in the past for devices in general, a couple of years ago, I believe Cheryl, um, sent, did do an RFP for that. The Troxel came back as the most competitive bid at that point in time. Um, and so that, that, that's, they're a consistent vendor that we utilize.
All right, are there any additional questions for Dr. Benton? Okay, um, just so we have a clean record, is there any objections if we go ahead and I'll make a motion and, and then we all vote on it? Is that acceptable to everyone, or would the preference be hold this over to our main board meeting?
I'd prefer to vote today.
Second or third, whatever.
All right, Miss Upchurch and Mr. Taylor?
I don't know that two weeks is going to make a difference other than, um, public comment, um, but I, I also understand we're under, uh, a timeframe of needing to get this done as well.
Mr. Taylor?
The question is, do you want to vote today?
Are there any objections if we have a, okay, perfect. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve, the, um, proposal for acquisitions of devices as presented in, um, the documentation that has been provided on board docs.
A second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, Miss Namika?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Matt, I was on mute. I do have a comment. Uh, my comment is that we, we as a board are about to vote on a proposal of technology that was planned several years back. And it concerns me that we're not, um, looking at current technology capabilities. This seems to be a, um, proposal that has aged, uh, for whatever reasons, but technology continues to advance. And so, you know, I'm not going to vote in support of this because I believe that we should be looking at better infrastructure that is probably more economic. And so I just wanted to put it out there publicly that while I agree in theory that technology needs to be a part of the academic learning model, I'm not convinced that this is the right architecture. Uh, so that's all I wanted to say.
Dr. Benton, I would like to hear your response to, um, Mr. Taylor's, um, statement, please.
So in terms of, uh, cost and device and, um, the ability for us to maintain and support, we believe that this is the best purchase and the best, um, use of the dollars that we're asking for at this point in time. The Chrome devices, uh, for, in terms of the access points that we already do have in terms of our wireless capability, and, and I hear Chris in terms of the infrastructure piece, but also in terms of the products that we utilize, the Chrome devices, uh, do work in a pretty seamless fashion with the fact that we do put so much of, uh, what we do in what we call the Google Waffle. Um, and so we have staff trained to support that, we have students trained to be able to access it. We have, um, like I said, we use ClassLink as another way for us to put in as many of the logins as possible, which is all web-based. We're not actually utilizing a ton of server space to pull any of this off either. But we do believe that the, the total cost of the device being, I believe it's, uh, two hundred and thirty to two hundred and fifty, include the licensing cost, is extremely low compared to many of the other devices that are available for, um, educational purposes.
And I appreciate your, uh, eva- evaluation and assessment of your plan. But there's alternatives that you haven't looked at. And, you know, I, that's why I'm not going to support this particular vote.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Benton, for my information, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Schwartz.
Well, I just wanted to, uh, ask a couple of questions and potentially make a couple of comments to, uh, Mr. Taylor's points. It's my understanding that, that, uh, laptop and, and handheld devices are not infrastructure, they're access devices. Do I have that correct? It's my understanding also that the software that is accessed by those is done so in the cloud. Do I have that correct?
Yes, for these devices.
It's also my understanding that those devices, the amount of CPU power and RAM that they carry really will relegate, delegate, and, and determine their longevity in terms of keeping up with whatever the, the web and the, uh, cloud will serve to them. Do I have that correct?
Yes.
How close to state-of-the-art in terms of RAM and CPU power are these devices?
Well, I define state-of-the-art for educa-
What year were they?
They're within this year, yeah. Their, their devices that are being, they would be, um, they would, so we're, by purchasing them, the way that we're purchasing them, they were, they're produced within this year. Um, and one of the things that we are up against is terms of the Chrome devices is required updates and the systems that they're running on. And these would include the most recent to give us the longest life possible, um, to be able to update these. Uh, and the updates are also managed, obviously, cloud-based, so. So, sorry, you can't hear. I think Ron lost.
Can I, 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 I don't know.
What's this from?
So I, I guess mine's a question comment, um, before voting. These would help us not only for what situation, if I understand correctly, that it's, it's compatible with the, the, um, curriculum that we just, we just approved. So we approved the curriculum, um, and now we need to approve the technology to support that curriculum.
Correct.
Okay, can these be used, and they can still be used also if we, if we're in a situation next year where we're still in remote learning situation, these are helpful for those students that need them as well. Is that right?
Correct, correct.
Would it be helpful also to be, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't ask this during discussion. When we're, when we've talked about, when we hear other districts talking about if we ever, beyond this situation that we are right now with the pandemic, but if we have snow days and we want to be able to do remote learning to make up for snow days, could these be used for that?
Um, in, uh, that would, that's a little bit more challenging question because we would have to know we're having the snow day ahead of time to be able to get students to device. Um, uh, so that, that makes that one a little bit tricky. In terms of e-learning, um, which is what is the equivalent, considered the equivalent for count or seat time, that is something that we believe the curriculum that we're purchasing, uh, it helps us do that. So that helps us shift into e-learning. You have to keep in mind, because our language arts adoptions are from two thousand and five, there's not a digital component to any of those. Um, the, the replacement of the curriculum was what it would allow us the e-learning concept.
Thanks.
Mr. Schwartz?
Can the team hear me?
We can.
So I think the software, speaking of technology, is so smart that it cuts me off when I start to talk, so clearly my family's been engaged in this.
I think Vicki has a button that she just pushes when, when she wants to disconnect you, Ron.
Yeah, I think my wife needs that button. So, uh, my apologies, I'm not sure what's going on here with my, my laptop or my connection. But my, my bigger, why I was taking Lori down that path and thank you for bearing with me was with respect to Chris's thought. Am I back?
You're back.
Um, just to be respectful of Chris's thoughts and concerns. Chris, if you were comfortable, this is state-of-the-art technology and, and utilizing the newer things that, that the industry would bring us, would that allow your, allow your concerns?
Well, that's exactly why I'm not going to vote for this proposal, because I'm talking about an overall infrastructure that is dated. And I don't care if the laptops were bought yesterday, they're still dated. There is a better infrastructure availability in the country, in Monument, that we could deliver this technology, maintain it at a lower cost, and keep it up to date more frequently than the current model. That's my point here. So I'm thinking long term and, and this, this proposal doesn't fit long-term planning because this is going to be a sunk cost that within a year or less or more, we're going to be looking at a long range plan of how technology supports this school district.
Hey, Chris, do you have an example of what that might be?
Yeah, I have a proposal sitting here right in front of me that went to the Mesa County Valley School District. And I'm happy to share that with you, but it's about an 80-page proposal, so.
You just, I bet, thank you. Can you just tell the team what it is? Because infrastructure is typically things like network servers and we're talking about web-facing access devices and cloud-based software.
Okay, so all of that infrastructure could be in the cloud. It's not. It's in a server room somewhere locally. Is all of our servers in the cloud? Maybe I, maybe I don't understand it.
Yeah, see, we're not talking about buying.
That's part of the problem.
Yeah, we're not talking about buying any servers. We're talking about buying things like this and things that fit on your lap. That's all we're talking about buying, right, Lori?
Correct.
We're all, all of the stuff that makes this sing and makes what's on your lap work sits in the cloud. And it's all 100% agile. The beauty of the cloud is it buys owners and users of software and hardware agility because they don't own it. They simply access it when they need that, need it. The truth of the matter is 35 years in IT, users of cloud end up paying more. That's the hard horrible truth. But the right, right at punchline, right? The value of it is you only pay for the stuff you use. Sure. So as a user, you're elated to pay more because you're not doing what, what Microsoft did with the Office Suite, which is when you use Word, you only use a third of the features. The beauty of the cloud is it's like a pick pack model. You pick what you want, you pick what you need and your pricing goes up and down based on utilization. Is there anything in what I just described, Dr. Benton, that is inconsistent with your proposal?
No.
Chris, does this help?
Thanks, Ron. You know, as one board member, you know, from my understanding, I, I thought, you know, Google Classroom and so forth is all cloud based, but I, I would be interested in reviewing the documentation from, from. Did you say it was Mesa Valley Schools, Chris?
I did. It's from 199, 2016, sorry.
2016, okay. You know, for purposes, and we're going to take a vote in a moment, for purposes of doing my due diligence, I'll probably vote no. And in the event that the, the vote does not carry, I would propose that we just put it on the, the May board meeting agenda. So with that being said, are there any other questions, comments or concerns before we, we take a vote?
Can we, can we table the vote? Does Robert's rules allow us to table it?
We could table it, but the bottom line is there's a, a, a motion on the table. So how does everyone, yeah, how does everyone feel about tabling it? Miss up church, we'll start with you.
I was gonna say, can I make a motion to table it for, for the opportunity for further review for the May board meeting?
Is there a second? Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I have a comment because so I've, I've talked to Dr. Benton at length and feel very comfortable with this purchase. I, I have a hesitancy at tabling a motion that's timeline dependent and budget dependent in order to review a 2016 document. I, I trust Dr. Benton's expertise is what I'm saying in this field and that she's vetted the best possible way to move forward, given the curriculum that we've already approved and that we're updating from 2005. So to provide the best learning environment for our kids come August, I would like to see your original motion, Matt, move forward.
Okay. All right. You know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, the only reason I consider tabling it is so that there's more of an opportunity for, there, there's five board members to, to be able to have a full understanding of what we're voting for. Because I'm, I'm getting the sense that we, we may not know what it is and we're looking at and if not all of us, and if, if it ends up not, if the motion doesn't carry, then we're looking at tabling it anyway to revisit because the, the reality is we still need to, to make sure that we have the devices, and I understand the device is a tool. We still need to have the tools necessary for students to be able to access that curriculum. But if not all of us are understanding it or would like to have that opportunity to understand it more, shouldn't we give that due diligence to be able to make sure we're all talking from the same page?
Valid point. And let me throw out one additional option, the event that the motion does not carry, you know, perhaps we could have another special meeting on Friday of this week or first part of next week and take another vote if that's what we need to do. You know, bottom line is this is a big chunk and I, I trust Dr. Benton implicitly, but Mr. Taylor brought up some scenarios that I guess were not on my radar screen that I would at least like to investigate before I, I vote in favor of the, the motion.
I was going to vote yes, but I am curious about what Mr. Taylor's talking about as well.
Okay. So with that being said, are we?
Let me just add in, in response to Ron and Teresa, this, this 2016 proposal is just a different orchestra, archi- architecture for a school district. It is not what I'm thinking of as a solution. What I'm saying, and I want to be as clear as possible, is what was presented to us today is a piecemeal request for some architecture that I'm not fully understanding. And that's my issue.
Okay, may, may I then make a, make a recommendation to the team?
Sure.
So actually, the more mature this technology gets, the simpler it becomes, is the truth. And we've had this conversation 10 Sorry, we were sorry, we would have been on a whiteboard and we would have been drawing red, red, yellow and black lines all over the place and my head would have been spinning too. I wonder if we can just take a half an hour and vet this as a team with Dr. Benton and the appropriate person on her staff so that we're comfortable moving forward. Chris, your points are hugely valid. With one maybe potential exception. And that is architectural approaches, approaches are typically best utilized for large enterprises. They have a significant investment in infrastructure. We are a, at best, a small, a medium enterprise or business. And we keep migrating away from infrastructure for the agility reasons that I mentioned prior. But clearly, this isn't the time of that conversation. If we could take maybe an hour and either use a virtual or an actual whiteboard and clarify it, I believe it might provide comfort for everybody that doesn't look this stuff on a daily basis.
What are your thoughts regarding Mr. Schwartz's proposal?
You asking me?
What was, what was the proposal again?
I think the proposal is to table the, this vote for he said 30 minutes, an hour. For me, I think the soonest I could get back on would be 2:30 today and then take a vote at that time.
Or, or do it on Friday or whatever, but my point is.
Well, it's, hold on, it's a time-bound proposal. I agree with what Teresa said. This is time-bound. There's no problem with us taking a vote. And if we have a three-two vote or a four-one vote, it doesn't matter. We don't have to all agree. I think that the request is out there, so I'm inclined to say not table it, let's vote on it. I'm just indicating that from a long-term planning perspective, I haven't seen how this proposal fits into the long-term plan. And I've mentioned to Matt and to you all and to Dr. Summers that I want everything to fit within the long-range plan moving forward. So I'm just, I've drawn a line in the sand. It's just me and that's my position. That's all. I'm not trying to debate software, hardware, web, cloud. I'm not an idiot either. So I'm just telling you why I'm not going to vote yes on this proposal today.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Taylor. Would you mind emailing us all the, the documents that you, you referenced?
No. It's from 2016. It's going to do you no good. Let me say it one more time. I'm not approving this proposal today because it's piecemeal. It's not part of a larger IT infrastructure learning plan. I don't see it that way. Now, maybe it's available, maybe it could be presented. I don't know because I haven't seen it.
Okay. You know, I guess what I'm struggling with is, you know, my, my, and I understand your perspective return regarding the long-term plan and I get that. But from my understanding, the whole reason why we are going to Chromebooks is, is they are cloud-based. And I just need to know if there's a better way that we could provide better access and better teaching opportunities for students at a better price. You know, for me, I'd just like to educate myself if there is another option out there and and you mentioned there might be and I, I just simply want to do my due diligence and if we need to look at a different direction, so be it. So you know, those are my two cents.
Well, and that, that's not that different than what I'm saying. What I saw in the presentation today was not a presentation that showed us any alternatives. It was something that was done several years ago and we just updated it. So it just didn't fit into, you know, any kind of plan from my perspective. It's an invoice with a list of Chromebooks and then an explanation of what we're doing with them. I don't know how that fits. What is the long-range plan for infrastructure this way? And if I'm using the wrong words, Ron, Ron, I'm really sorry. We don't have to agree.
No, I, I'm respectful of the fact we don't have to agree, number one. And number two is I think that maybe Dr. Benton, I'd ask you the question. This is less of a technology plan and more of a learning, part of a learning plan, is it not? The technology is just a screwdriver to, to fasten the components, yeah?
Correct. It's a, it's a five-year proposal basically for the curriculums that were put in front of the school board as well as allows us greater flexibility to, to, to shift different devices to other areas within the buildings. So yes, it is a learning plan.
May I ask Dr. Summers to give his insight into how he sees this fitting in with the long-term plan?
Sure. I think the first step we have to acknowledge is that we're not where we need to be with the current devices that we have employed. So if we are being asked, excuse me a minute, do you mind? Dr. Benton and I are in the same room. I'm getting a, okay, thanks. What I would say is hearing your own voice sometimes messes with your own mind. We're in a position where this, at this point in time, is our best foot forward. I, I don't envision a drastic change to the proposal that you have in front of you because at the end of the day, we know that our kids need the most up and versatile use of the technology that we can employ. And so if we're not comfortable with pushing forward on that today, I don't know that we're going to be in any better of a position a week from now, two months from now, I Chromebooks are kind of the, the learning tool and it is just that, it is the tool. It is not the ultimate destination as far as what we're trying to accomplish within a, a learning space. It's just what we need in order to be able to deliver the curriculum that we, for some time, and I, I know I'm still in my first year, but we've not been up to date. So this is catching us up. I, I appreciate that it may not be getting us exactly where we want to be five, 10 years from now, but to be fair, I don't know that we've had enough of those conversations to, to really propel us in that future direction. So is, is it more right now addressing an immediate need? Yes. Is it the best proposal that we could put forward to you? We wouldn't be bringing it to you if it wasn't. And I appreciate that there's a lot of other angles that we could be pursuing and looking at. I don't know that any of those would necessarily drastically alter the current proposal that's in front of you. So I think it is our best foot forward, given our current context and where we do see the immediate need for our kids as early as this next fall and over the next, I, I mean, I could commit to the next, I believe it's two, three, no, I think it's a four-year shelf life for these devices. So I think it will help create what we need for the next three to four years and get us closer to where we're trying to get.
Dr. Summers, sorry for interrupting.
No, that's okay. I just, I appreciate the expertise of Dr. Benton and Dr. Summers and I, again, I would just, I would urge us to go forward with your original motion, Matt.
Okay, well, we're, we're going to take a vote on it. Dr. Summers, as far as what we do in District 38, is it consistent with other districts that you've been involved with as far as the Chromebooks? You know, Google Docs, the online resources for both students and teachers?
I think we are playing catch-up. I think this proposal allows us to accelerate that process of catching up. So I think this brings us more in line with other districts that I've had familiarity with. If we don't do it, I, I fear that we're continuing to stay at least a few steps behind.
Okay, then as far as what Mr. Taylor described as, as another option, a more cloud-based system, do you have any knowledge or expertise in that area? Once again, I'm just trying, you know, this is out of my realm of expertise. So I'm just trying to obtain a little more information and, and so I could make a good educated decision.
I appreciate that. I'll answer it. I'm not the resident expert on all things related to IT infrastructure and, and everything that falls into that category or cloud, if we can use that pun, but at the end of the day, this is what's most accessible. It's what's most available. It's what's most consistent with what we're trying to do, both from a standpoint of working with a tool that our teachers are comfortable with, that is really easy to access and utilize from a student perspective. And, you know, in terms of vast alternatives, I don't, I'm not aware of those, other than if we went to a complete i iCloud, iPad, I fill in the blank, and that's not where we're at. And, and that would require a huge investment if we were trying to move into more of that area. So based on what we're currently working with in, in our system, I think this helps us, like I said earlier, catch up. And, you know, as it continues to evolve, as, as the system around us becomes more refined, I think we'll, we'll stay attuned to those changes. Certainly as, as time continues, we can continue to, to flesh this out and to, in terms of more of a a longer-term plan, but I think for where we're at today, this is actually catching us up to where we should be.
Okay. All right. Any additional comments or questions?
I just, I think that it seems like the, the discussion is going to a, we're not necessarily comparing apples to oranges. The, the biggest debate I see with school districts is whether we're, whether a school district's going to go with iPads or Chromebooks, but the, the Chromebook is a, it's a tool and you can't even access the cloud without the tool to access. So it, it's, I think, Ron, your demonstration of, you know, do you want to go with iPhones or do you want to go with Android? Is kind of where we see most debates going. And, and to do it an entire platform overhaul, so to speak, with going to an Apple-based system, it seems more costly than going this route. For what my, my sense of it is.
That's a, that's a fair summation, Miss Up Church. Obviously, there's a lot of details we can get into with that, but again, based on where we currently situate today, this is, this is like I said, I don't, I just don't envision us being able to present much more of a refined proposal other than maybe going with a different vendor, but at that point, I don't, there, it's really a wash in terms of total cost, et cetera. total cost, et cetera.
This, if I may, this is a learning agility proposal. This is not an asset or a hardware proposal. And so the bigger question to Chris's point is does this fit into the long range learning plan for the staff and the students? Yes or no question?
Simple answer, yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Matt, you might wanna Google it though. That was a fun.
Nice one, Chris, nice one.
Nice, Chris. All right, um, let's go ahead and take a, a vote.
Mr. Clausen.
Nay.
Ms. Phillips.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Nay.
Ms. Upchurch.
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries, so, um, I will go ahead and sign the necessary documentation today, and just once again, for the record, um, I do support this. I just felt like as one board member, um, with the new, um, ideas that, um, Mr. Taylor brought up, I felt that I needed to do my due diligence before I, I supported this, but, um, with that being said, is there any other business that we need to conduct, um, during our, our special meeting?
Mr. Clausen, if, if I may, just really quick, uh, if, can I interject just one last comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, elevate again once more, and I, I think we've done it, uh, occasionally throughout the presentation, but uh, we have phenomenal staff. Um, I will go on record saying it's the best uh, teaching staff and support staff that, uh, any district, uh, is fortunate enough to have, and so uh, recognizing where we're at with Teacher Appreciation Week, I know this was a lot of information, and for anyone that has been uh, staying attuned, um, thank you for, um, sticking with us and staying together, staying one team, our team. Um, it's a pleasure and a honor to serve all of you, and uh, I just would be remiss if I didn't, uh, take an opportunity to just elevate that one more time. Uh, all the results that we're getting from, uh, positive experiences dur- during remote learning and being prepared for how we're taking these steps forward into the future. It's a testament and tribute to, uh, each and every one of our staff members. So if I could, I could high five you, hug you, I know I'm not right now, uh, I, I just want to say that in closing. Um, thank you all. Um, and we're gonna get through this, thank you.
I guess there's one last, um, item. Um, as a board, what, what are your thoughts about, um, what we could do for teacher appreciation?
Oh, Tiffany and I had a conversation yesterday. Uh, Tiffany, do you wanna speak to that?
So we had some ideas we wanted to run by you, Dr. Summers, um, as far as something we can do as a board. Are you still doing the Friday Night Lights?
We are, yes.
So would it be feasible for us five board members to stand six feet apart on the field for Friday Night Lights? And each of us, uh, share a message with our staff. I mean, I know it's Friday night. It's the end of Teacher Appreciation Week, but I also feel like Teacher Appreciation Week is just gonna be a continuous, ongoing thing while we get through this.
I, I appreciate that suggestion and that idea. I think we'd be happy to accommodate that.
And Tiffany, I, I'm sorry, I didn't apprise you of some other conversations I've had. I think it would have to be a week from Friday on the fifteenth, so it would be a little bit I mean, you know, later, but in terms of Teacher Appreciation Month, maybe we could still swing that?
So, and I, we're, so, uh, while we were in, been in this meeting, we, uh, do it, did teacher appreciation for, for example, Lewis Palmer Elementary School, we put together bare necessity baskets for the staff and had them delivered to the staff, just a, a goody basket um, that we parent, as parents chipped in. Each school, I'm hoping is doing their own thing, um, at the high school level, for example, Palmer Ridge High School. It's a little different because not all, a lot of the staff is not in the buildings. But as I understand it, uh, Terry, uh, the principal is going to be doing some type of food truck for when the students are out processing, so um, there's an opportunity for us to, to show our appreciation in, in those small ways as well. Um, whether it's that we share a candy bar or something for the teachers during that time, but I think the words of encouragement and the personal messages also. Um, that was something we talked about. We talked about how, what would it take for each of us to split up the the workload and handwrite a message or a thank you note to each and every staff member, each and every teacher. That's a lot of people, but, um, at the same time, aren't they worth it?
Can I follow on with, uh, what you just said, Tiffany? Um, Casey, is that a viable option on May twenty second to be in person at either both of the high schools? Or does that just add more, more complexity that doesn't need to be there?
What, what I would suggest we do, every school is, uh, working creatively right now to have a, uh, end of the year staff, um, something, and it's, it's hard to say big celebration because we're, we're limited in some of what we can do, but what I can have, um, Kathy create is a spreadsheet of what that, what is happening that last week. Um, and at least invite you all to be part of whatever that, uh, in-person interaction may be.
That, that would be helpful. Um, and just to inform the rest of the board members, I, um, the last three weeks have been online with, um, all the school sites at various staff meetings, and I, I have thanked them on behalf of the entire board for the lift that they've given during this distance learning, and, um, I know that Matt was aware of that, but I'm not sure if everyone else was. So, you know, we have I tried to, um, canvas that as, as best we can, given these conditions.
We appreciate those efforts and, um, those sentiments on behalf of the whole board.
All right, is there anything else that we need to discuss today?
So are we gonna do Friday Night Lights?
Yeah, I, I like that idea, and, um, Ms. Phillips, um, I think, um, I'm the one that had the scheduling conflict on Friday, and I was able to work through that, so if we want to do it as early as, um, this Friday, the eighth.
Okay. Okay, so Ron, I guess Ron and Chris, are you available on Friday, the eighth? To meet at the football field?
What if you have a bad, what if you have a good face for radio? You still want me to show up?
I'm gonna bring a Drew Brees cutout.
So, uh.
Next to, at Donbury Stadium, and, and, uh, the only other thing, and I don't know Julie, if you're, I think Julie's currently on the call, but, uh, we'll, we'll tap into our communications team so that they can, uh, be there to help uh, make all that happen, so we, we can, uh, coordinate that through, through, uh, Julie, Stephen.
Okay, and I, I'm glad to coordinate, glad to coordinate the timeframe. As I understand it, the lights are on from seven to nine, is that correct?
Uh, it might be a little later now because it's a little darker.
Oh, yeah, right, okay.
That out for you guys.
Okay.
So we should plan on after seven thirty essentially, PM.
Yeah, why, why don't we plan on being there at seven thirty unless you hear otherwise, and then, just so we're not each saying the same thing. Um, Teresa or Tiffany, do you wanna make some assignments as far as, um, what you would propose each board member address?
We will. Why don't Tiffany, you and I can, uh, meet, uh, separately and we'll get that out to everyone.
Yep.
If you guys want extra credit, you could do a TikTok. Challenge to you guys. But I might have to, to, uh, rein y'all in, um, we're getting too crazy on the TikTok.
Shuffle?
Yeah, exactly.
You, you know, I like the idea of the TikTok. I, I'm not much of a dancer, but if, if you wanna give me a challenge, I'll, I'll accept it.
Hey, Matt, one other thing, uh, would you be willing to write a message from the board president, uh, that can be sent out to our staff?
Yeah, absolutely. I would, um, I would consider that an honor. And the last thing, um, who's gonna bring the football for, um, Friday night?
We'll, we'll have a football there for you. We made, all right, sanitizing wipes if we're playing.
All right, sounds good.
We could each wear school gear.
All right, is there anything else? All right, well, we stand adjourned, and once again, I appreciate everything that you all do and, and, um, look forward to connecting with you on, on Friday night at seven thirty. Take care.
Thank you, Matt.